Welcome to the 148th meeting of the Board of Trustees of ISO. We are today in Singapore and this is our cue for meeting. So, sorry, we are a few minutes late, but there were some logistical problems here. And let's get started. So, you know, welcome everyone. We didn't get apologies from any trustees. So we have, you know, the whole board here, which is great. And any declarations of conflicts given the agenda? So Glenn, please, and Mike. So first Glenn, then Mike.
Yes, like to deter my repercuse from the PIR report and vote number seventeen.
Okay, perfect. So PIR related discussions. Okay, thank you Glenn. Mike, please.
So this is a very low level conflict. If it is one of what I just want to alert people to the fact that I discovered this morning that R Street, you know, who I, for whom I were, signed the letter opposing, the NGO letter opposing the sale of PIR. And I was that none of that was clear. That does not reflect like anything me acting covertly within R Street. What it really reflects is that R Street, as their habit, didn't ask me about anything before doing this. So I'm going to have a discussion with them. That'll be an entertaining and comical discussion. But I just want to be clear that there's no, I, you know, as you know, I'll know where I voted on the last and previous meetings, and I'm still with, with all that. This does not reflect any, I will say how I found out because it's, which was that Desiree emailed me. She said, "I was very pleased to see that you, you know, that you, R Street signed on." And so I responded fully and frankly with a wink emoji.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for doing clarification. Yeah, that's not so much a conflict of interest, but yeah, it's a good clarification for, for everyone. Yeah, thanks a lot. And we'll have a Q and A session later to, to talk about, about that. So, so that's great. Okay, thank you. So, so we can, you know, directly move on to point number two on the agenda, which, as I always clarify, this is not passing any resolution. It's just to document what was, you know, passed before. So it's just a formality, basically. So John, you want to introduce, I mean, very briefly or?
As usual, since everybody has already voted for all these resolutions, presumably they, they know what they say. We can see we've been, we've been a busy board since the last, since the last in-person meeting.
Thank you, John. Yeah, we are, as you know, our ways of working nowadays, we, we pass a lot of resolutions by e-vote, and, and this is where we document everything. So thanks, John. And, and you know, for the record, you can read all the resolution. So moving to point number three on the agenda, which is, you know, the approval of the minutes of the last meeting. And these are the, for the trustees, the minutes of the, of the last remote meeting we had, which we had to, you know, recess and, and open a couple of times. As there's some confidential information there, we have actually, you know, well, you want to, yeah, maybe John can explain that.
Yeah, I've made two versions of the, of two versions of the minutes. There's a full version for everybody who was involved in the decision. And then there's a redacted version, which, and in the full version, you can see it's, there's, there's brackets saying redacted around the parts that are left out. And there were a few things I neglected to redact until the last minute. There's a final version sent out yesterday evening, which is the one I want you to approve. And I guess when we, when we vote for it, we're, we are simultaneously approving the full version for our internal use and redacted version for public publication.
Yeah, thank you, John. So any, any questions on, on that before we approve it? Yeah, Walid.
Just checking into the minutes, there are some sentences that are missing information. So, I mean, they're part of the full version, so.
I mean, the point, I mean, if you think there are important things that we should put in, we can defer this until later and you can, we can talk at the break and see if there's stuff that, do you want me to add?
Just, I mean, a sentence wasn't completed, so we can defer that.
Well, actually, if, if it's just like a typographical error, we can fix that later.
There's a whole sentence.
Yeah, why don't we defer this and we'll come back later?
Okay, so we will defer it. And, and if you can, Walid, if you can send the, your comment to the list so that John can look into it while, while we are here, and then if needed, we talk in the break, and then we'll, we'll pass it later. Okay, so we will go back to, to point number three. Well, before any other comments on point number three? Okay, good. So we will come back to that later. Thanks, Walid. So, so moving on to point number four on the agenda, which is to amend the charter of the compensation committee. So, so as, as you know, there were certain tasks by the compensation committee that we were not performing lately because they, they don't need to be performed once a year. So it was kind of, you know, not needed. But, but then we decided that we should actually have a clearer process because many of those things, they were basically phrased as the compensation committee doing something, while in reality is HR providing the compensation committee with information and the compensation committee will review that. So since, you know, we had some changes in HR, I was waiting until basically we, we could have someone to talk to. And now we got on the same page with, with the human resources department so that, you know, they are clear on what type of information we need, when we needed, our time plan for approving and all that. I also clarified because some, some of the goals were kind of mixed between like setting the goals for the president for the following year and approving the goals from the previous year. So in some sentences, it wasn't really clear what goals we were talking about because they are two sets of goals, obviously. So basically, these are all, you know, clarifications and, you know, also the, the work plan with the timeframe and everything. So this is, this is basically the change that we were proposing and, and it was sent to the list. Any comments before? No? Okay, so I need someone to move. Hands, Peter moves, per second. Are we gonna do a show of hands with, you know, yes, no, abstain? So yes votes? Abstentions? No votes? Okay, so the resolution passes unanimously for, for John to capture. Okay, thank you. Yeah, those are minor changes, but, but we still need to approve them, of course. Moving to point number five on the agenda. And, oh, and by the way, as I mentioned before, my laptop is not working, so I don't have any back channel or anything. So if you need to talk to me, just talk to me physically at a break or at some point, or get my attention waving or, or anything like that. So email, I still can do with the other devices, so. So point number five, which is to amend the, the procedures for, for selecting trustees. And this was basically something that Walid introduced last time. You want to give a thirty second summary? Oh, no, sorry. So it was the, the point number five on the agenda, you know, the, the procedures for selection trustees when we are changing the, oh, no, 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 sorry. No, that's a different one. No, so this is actually the, yeah, exactly, the changes for the org member, because we, we had two things. I was, I was getting confused, sorry, Walid. So this is, as you may remember, in the last OMAC meeting, when we were in Montreal and Andrew was in the ball pit, there was, you know, certain proposals for, for, you know, changes. And one of them basically involves the lower tiers of our membership, of our organizational membership, basically to collapse them. So they were core copper. Yeah, the precious metals, but what was, the names were copper? Well, they are in the resolution. Yeah. Yeah. Well, anyway, I mean, you have seen all the proposal. So this is about basically collapsing the lower tiers and they were like three of them and into one. The, the reception by the OMAC was very positive. They were very happy that, you know, we were basically responsive. Okay, yeah. So Andrew?
Yes. So the, the former arrangement was platinum, gold, silver, bronze, professional, small enterprise and copper. And, and then there's weighting, right? So there's respectively on those, it's six, five, four, three, two, one and one. And, and what we're doing is collapsing that to just platinum, gold, silver, bronze and copper. And the weights are six, five, four, three and one. There's no two weight. And there's also no duplicated one weight. And the reason for this, what this really is, is a cleanup from the, from OTA. So, so we, we had multiple levels because we brought the OTA in. It was an attempt to, to put those two organizational models together. And now this is an effort to, to make it simpler so that it's easier to explain the different levels to, to members.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, that's what I meant, but I had forgotten the names like small enterprise and all that. And, I mean, we have been here actually, I mean, he can confirm, the reception was quite positive in, in Montreal. So we, we are just actually, you know, confirming that, that change. So any, any questions before we vote on the resolution? Okay, so same process. I need someone to move. Olga moves. He rose his seconds. And again, show of hands. Yes, no, abstain. So yes votes? Abstentions? No votes? So the resolution passes unanimously. Thank you. And, and thanks for, as I said, I mean, the, the org members, they, they were, I mean, appreciating actually our, our capacity to, to react to their comments because the original proposal, as you may recall, I mean, there were some comments and concerns. So, so I'm very happy that we were able to do this. Okay, good. So, so moving to point number six. And I've been rushing a bit because, as I said before, maybe when we were offline, in this meeting, we have a lot of hard stops and starts because the time difference is a bit inconvenient with, especially with Europe and especially with, with America. So we are like thirteen hours ahead of New York, for example. So in that sense, we have to really hit some of the, of the milestones on the, on the agenda. And one of them is to get Eduardo to present the advisory council report. So do we have Eduardo online already? Okay, this is great. So, so it's good that we could catch up in time. Eduardo, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yeah, give us one second to increase your volume. Okay, so let's see if we can do that.
Say something, Eduardo. Can you hear? Can you hear me?
Yeah, now it's perfect. Can you put more bass on Eduardo's voice? Okay, Eduardo, please go ahead.
Okay, I'm trying to put my video, but I says I cannot start the video because it has us stop it. So you can hear me. That's fine.
Yeah, we cannot see you, but maybe Kevin can work on that. So you can start and get going.
Okay, so this is just a, this is going to be a very brief report of what we have been doing in the chapter advisory since last time we met. So if we move to the next slide, please. Can you hear me still?
Yes, we can, we can.
Okay, I'm sorry, I, something happened here.
Okay.
Anyhow.
We can see the, we can see the slides as well. So, okay, so Seth and Kevin are trying to get your, your video up, so.
Okay, so let me see if I can turn it on. No, it says, it says that I'm not allowed to do it, but anyhow, I can continue.
Let's take one minute to try and fix it.
Okay. I, I get a message here when I start my media, says, my video, it says, "You cannot start your video because the host has stopped it."
Oh, I see. Okay.
So I'm not sure.
Try again, Eduardo.
I will try again. Now it seems to be.
There we go, there we go. Now I can see you. Excellent.
Yeah, I don't see myself, so I guess I, I look okay, fine.
You, you look really good. Okay, Eduardo, thanks a lot. It was worth it to, to take one minute to fix it. So please go ahead.
Now you can see. Anyhow, well, I always start with the steering committee, team members, so, and just brief, so you know who we are. I'm going to just review some of the advice work that we just sent to you recently and what we, I expect or I looking ahead was coming. So if you can move to the next slide, please. Well, again, this, this is where we are, the people that are in the team for 2019. And we're currently on election, so this team will change going, starting in 2020. Next one, please. And this is the advice that we just sent recently. And I want to thank you, Gonzalo, for responding so fast to, to this. And from these three advices, there's the middle one, the ISO fellowship program. We believe we sent it too late since the ISO fellowship program changed. It's going to change. So that was, that advice is there. So if this program is reviewed in the future, please look at this advice and, and see if we can, you know, do something about what we are advising there. And all these three advices, we're going to circle back in six months, just to make sure that, you know, to find out what the status of this are. And, and if we need to keep follow-up on them, you know, one way or another, if you decide to close it or not do anything, but that, that, or do something about it, then if we just want to come back about every six months and see how this is going. So we don't lose this continuity that we send the advice and.
I think, yeah, I think that's really good because, as you know, I mean, I don't like when, when we have an action point and we drop the ball. But on this specifically, I mean, when I got you, Eduardo, back to you, Eduardo, and we were discussing, I mean, I don't think there's anything specific that the board should be doing now.
No.
Yeah, just to confirm so that our expectations match.
No, this, this, these advices are mostly has to do with thing for staff and most for the board. And again, this is, this is advice, this is what's coming from the chapters and such. So we just wanted to make sure that we can come back, we can go back to the chapter and say, you know, this happened.
Exactly. No, just to, just to make sure that, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm taking, you know, advice either as for information like this one or for our action. So this one, my understanding is for your information, which you are confirming. So, so thanks to, to keep us in the loop.
It is correct. It is correct.
Excellent, thank you.
But I'm just saying here that, you know, we expect the next team of the SE to come back in six months and just check.
Yes.
So like, but again, it's, it would be a new team, SE team, so, you know, they can
Absolutely.
Anyhow, can we go to the next one, please? Okay, so looking ahead, we started some discussion about the ISO five-year strategy. The topic is there. I believe this strategy has not been approved yet. I think it's going to be approved in this meeting. So we have this discussion topic, just to follow the strategy and see how it goes going forward and getting feedback from the chapters based on, on, on this strategy. We have heard some chapters already that are concerned about the strategy about being too technical. There is, there is no, in the strategy, when you look at it, there is no community, anything for the communities, everything technical. So, you know, this is a concern that some of the chapters has about, you know, why there's nothing there that for the community to, to follow. So, but chapters will do what they have to do to support ISO mission in its own way. So we will keep you posted on this and, and see, you know, once the strategy start being implemented, then we can be more in tune with it and see how, how is that reflected? Any questions about that?
Yeah, okay, Eduardo. And yeah, and I believe, I mean, we have consulted the community on, on this. Maybe, Andrew, you want to clarify?
So, so there are a couple of things that I would say about this. The first thing is that you're, you're right that we haven't adopted and the, and the board has not adopted the, any, any five-year plan. And just for clarity, what is being presented to the board for adoption today is actually only the 2020 plan. So the, the longer term stuff is the framework in which we're working, but the, the only, it's, it's the basis on which we were developing this, but we have not concluded a five-year strategic plan. So I, I want to be clear about that. But it's also true that, you know, we have been, we have been, I agree with you, having discussion, and I hope that that discussion continues. That's part of the reason that we keep having so many of these consultations. And I recognize that the consultations that we've had so far have not been as, maybe as, as broad and detailed as everyone might like. You know, we, we can only start with one step and then we have to make multiple steps after that. But there is an intention here to continue to develop this with the community. I, I remain concerned about the, the threat, and we talked about this informally in Montreal, I guess, that, that there is a perception that there's only technical subjects here because the, the view of the staff so far has been that what these mostly are are policy issues that impinge upon technical areas, right? I mean, the, just to pick on one, the emphasis on encryption is obviously not, you know, hiring a bunch of mathematicians. We're not making a new primitive. We're, I'm talking about how people deal with that. So it's pretty clear that we need to make that a little bit clearer for the community in order to engage, and I really appreciate the feedback.
Okay, well, it's, it's just something, an impression, what we saw in, in Montreal in the, that breakfast, it was all about technical stuff. So that's, it's, it's, it's there. So, you know, like I said, we have to see how this evolves. And, and I'm just saying that looking ahead, we will, you know, we have this discussion is, is there and we are talking about it. But, you know, when we see it being implemented, then we will see how it goes.
Okay, yeah. And, and no, thanks for the feedback. And just to stress Andrew's point, I mean, as you know, the, the long-term strategy, I mean, that's one of the things that the board works on. And, but you know, we nevertheless want a bottom-up approach as well. So we get input from everyone, including obviously, you know, our, our chapters, you know, orgs, staff. But at the end of the day, you know, at some, we will have to basically discuss that in the board in more detail. So, you know, your, your feedback is, and input is, is highly appreciated.
Okay, thank you. So the, the other thing is that we're in the mid, in the middle of the elections. We're starting for the new SE team and comparing, right now, there are only twenty-six percent of the chapters that have participated. Staff have told us that, you know, this, this percentage increase like exponentially when we get to the, you know, closer to the deadline, which is the twenty-one of November. So we still have, I believe, another week, right? To finish this. I mean, yes, 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 yes. And if we compared it to the twenty-nine, twenty-eighteen, we got about sixty-four percent participation, which I hear from some that is very good. So, you know, I see this as a engagement type, you know, like a barometer of how many delegates are engaged in this advisory committee, you know, because you see them, if they're interested in voting or not, or at all. But let's see how it, how it, how is it this thing ends? And the new team will be in place by the meeting that we set the date in fourteen January of twenty-twenty. That's when we do a, we invite the old team, the new team, and then there is an integration and then the new team goes off from, from there. So there are no questions? We can go to the next slide?
Yes, Olga has a question. So Olga, please.
Hola Eduardo.
Hola Eduardo.
Wrong answer, Eduardo.
Yeah, well.
It's just the Spanish structure. One question, how long do the, how long is the mandate of those of you who are in the, that I cannot recall in the steering committee? Can you?
One year. According to the charter, it's one year. And then I guess renew every year. And, you know, I was thinking the other day, because I don't remember who was, who I was talking to, I said, "But you know, we need to bring new people into the advisory committee and the steering committee and say, well, but you know, this, this, you need to have to have some kind of, of, like, many, many boards and other places that you bring people about for three years and then, then they start, you know, getting new people in and they shadow you, they learn the, these things, you know, in a, in a, in a year and then they start, and then they can pick it up. If you keep bringing new people and mostly, you know, if, if you bring people from new chapters, really, it's, it's hard for these people to understand, you know, where's, what this ISO, where it's coming from and, and it gets, you know, it gets, you get acquainted with it, it takes you a year. And by the end of the year, then you might be out or, you know, there's a new team. And I believe this, this advisory council should be a tool where you can get real feedback or consensus feedback from the chapters into whatever is what we're doing. And, and to do that, you have to have some kind of continuity and you cannot change people every year. But that's the way the charter is. So maybe the team next year can look at the charter and see how this can be changed and do some kind of step, you know, increase the, the mandate for the people to be three years and then goes down and just rotates.
A follow-up question, but I see the names of the persons in the committee now already in the list. So my question is if you can be re-elected?
Oh, you can be re-elected.
Which is okay, I mean, just asking.
Yeah, you can be re-elected many times. There is no, there is no.
No limit.
No limit, but for example, if you want, if you understand there is other people in your, in your chapter that can do this job because they have been there for a long time and they, you know, you understand they have, they know enough and that, and have the character to, to do this. And you want to nominate them, you can't. It is like, the way the chapter was set up is that you can nominate only people that have, that are currently delegates.
I see.
So it's, it's, but it was set up that way. And I guess it was set up that way, so you bring new people or, you know, because if you don't want to be in the SE next year, it's like you have to quit before to allow other delegate, you know, to be, to have other delegates so you can nominate them.
I see. Okay, thank you.
So that's it.
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, but, but you say it makes sense that there's some issues with the governance. So, I mean, yeah, changing like, you know, having longer terms and limiting terms and, and, you know, a clear succession strategy. I mean, I, I think that would be great, so.
Yeah, because really, you really want to have an advisory committee that is effective, that brings you information that you can use to make ISO better. And, and, and if you keep changing, you know, this changes every year, you know, it's just the, the, the process that you have to go through, it's really a whole year can pass and you will receive nothing.
Yeah. Okay, so please, please keep us updated on, on these discussions. Thanks.
Okay, I will, I will. So the next, the next and last slide has to do with the, we're going to have a full chapter AC meeting in September, this September, in December seventeen of this year. This meeting is really to report what we have been doing during the year and the advice and so forth. But I already have a chapter asking me to have this item in the agenda, which I'm, I'm going to have it. And, and I think it's going to be a hot item that we will probably spend the whole meeting talking about this. So nothing specific, we have been formulated as an outcome of this discussion at this moment, but I just wanted to make you aware that this conversation is going to happen in December seventeen. And I believe some kind of, something's going to, something is going to come out from, from that meeting, maybe a declaration, I don't think it's going to be an advice, but it will, I would, you know, we are going to try to make it, whatever it is that is a consensus document, if it happens to be from the chapter. So when you get, if you get something from this conversation, you will get something that is not what one person says and two people say, where will be a consensus from the chapters. And, and as far as I know, part of the responsibility that we have with the advisory council is that we are like the voice of the chapters. So you don't get all this noise. I mean, I have, I have read and I keep reading lots of mail. And, and there is one common message that I have seen in all the mails that, because being, you know, some people are happy that the sale is going to happen or they are not, maybe others are happy because it's happened this way or this are not because it's happening another way. There is a common, common threat and is that the chapters were taken by surprise and they were not, they didn't know about this. Maybe it's a message that it was, the way it was announced or, or like that, I don't know. But that's a common threat. It's, it's a, I think it's a communication, you know, chapters. When I read this, I feel people in many chapters, all the chapters that are more active than others are feeling that they have been, this is my own perception. I mean, I, I feel that they're second-class citizens within this.
So Eduardo, I, I agree. I mean, I've been always reading the, I mean, I have also been reading the, the mailing list and, and as you know, Andrew has been putting a lot of cycles answering those emails. So, so, I mean, we, we care a lot about, you know, addressing concerns and informing things. I, I think, as you said, that this may be a communication or a misunderstanding issue about the governance of ISO. And, and we will, we will tackle that in the Q and A we have later. But the, I mean, I think people need to understand the legal requirements when, when, you know, we cannot simply disclose something because it's. I mean, I think people need to understand the legal requirements when when, you know, we cannot simply disclose something because it's not that we don't want to do it. It's because we cannot do it by law. And as you can imagine, we have to comply with that. And and then, I mean, last time we changed the governance of of ISOC in any significant way was like, I don't know, seven years ago, something like that. And as you may remember, actually, the chapters got more weight. So, you know, now there's like four, four people that they are selected by chapters and everything. But by no means we became like an organization that that, you know, can break the law and consult things that that, you know, it's in the board's mandate. So so maybe clarifying those things would be would go a long way. So, yeah, let's talk about that. And as I said, we're going to have a Q and A later. We will talk about this in more detail. But thanks for the heads up and keep us updated.
Yeah, I just wanted to let you that this conversation is happening there. So and, you know, we'll communicate what whatever Christine is going to be there. So she can bring back, you know, her feedback on that. So that's all I have. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Eduardo. Yeah, this is great. And thanks for keeping us updated on on, you know, all the the activities, you know, things that are going to happen, things that has happened. And thanks for also the follow up on the on the action points and recommendations that that's that's really good to have a structured way to to understand what's going on. Do we have any questions or comments? Sean?
I just want to say thank you for the clear report.
Oh, no, as I said, the structure was really good, you know, information very well structured. So, yeah, I appreciate that, Eduardo. Thanks a lot.
Yeah. Well, thank you for all of you for giving me some time to give you this report. I, you know, it's it's always appreciated.
Excellent. Thank you, Eduardo. Thanks a lot.
Now I can go back to sleep?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I know. Yeah, the time is inconvenient for for many people that are going to join us. So, yeah, thanks a lot, Eduardo. Thanks.
Bye bye. Take care.
Yeah.
Have a good meeting.
Or a good night. Bye bye.
Bye bye.
Okay. So, okay, good. Perfect. So so this is another of the of the, okay, let me second. Okay, good. This is the beauty of not having chatroom using paper. So I was just reading the the note I got. So so what, as I said, you know, we have some hard stops and hard starts. So one of them is to have Elliot join us to to talk about the mailing list. And he's going to be ready in fifteen minutes. So I suggest that we break before. So we have the break. And then we take, you know, half an hour to to basically fix the the mailing list issue. And and to give you a heads up, as you know, the issue is that we had to reconfigure the list. But I didn't want to reconfigure it just when we were remote, because if something bad happens, like, you know, things start going to spam, or you don't receive email, this is absolutely not acceptable. So we will do everything on the fly, and Elliot will will do that in fifteen minutes. So coffee break of fifteen minutes. And for remote participants, we will be back in forty five minutes. So thank you. We 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 managed to fix our mailing list during the break, which was great. And we want to thank Elliot again for the support. And and now we are basically, as I said, we have very, you know, hard times in in this meeting, because we have many people joining remotely and everything. And for this meeting, for this presentation, which, you know, Jim is going to deliver, is one of those that, you know, we may have actually, you know, Crystal joined remotely as well, and some people may want to follow it. So that's why we we waited until now. So, Dean, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Jim Galvin, for the record, I appreciate that. I guess Crystal has not yet joined us, but that's okay. We'll go ahead and go forward. She can come in when when she gets there.
Yeah, because later presentations are the same thing. So we cannot really.
So thank you very much for the opportunity to report on behalf of the O Mac and and our activities here going forward. This morning, you should have received a two page more detailed report of all of our summary of activities for the year. And what I have here is two slides in which I just highlight a few things for discussion here. So there's no action or request from the board. So we can just go through the the talking points here. And I think that will suffice for discussion here with the board. So next slide, please. So this is a summary, a quick highlight of a few things over the course of the past year. We do put as a as a first bullet up here, increased engagement. But I want to be careful not to overstate that too much. Because organizational members do tend to have a much more limited frequency or or number of members who get engaged, having discussions in that as compared to the chapters and chapter delegates and that kind of thing. But nonetheless, we we have been able to run some surveys to get people to register and indicate interest in meetings and topics. And we have gotten some responses with all of that, more so than in the past, even though the numbers are still could be kind of low in the in the grand scheme of things. But we do count it as as a success that we've been able to move a move the needle a bit and do a little bit more than we had had in the years prior. And we're hoping that that will continue to increase in the year to come. So in particular, we had a new model for how to run the meetings this year and what we were going to do. And we executed on that model. We had four that we had planned. And we made a conscious effort to not have a meeting if there were not going to be people there or if we didn't have substance to discuss. And that resulted in actually cancelling essentially two meetings of the O Mac. But we were able to have two meetings. So in the two that we canceled, the RSA meeting last year, you know, since that was kind of the first one on the agenda when we were sort of moving towards a new model, we weren't able to get organized enough with enough people. But nonetheless, the ISOC staff had themselves a breakfast meeting in which they did get some amount of attendance and some other people from the area. So it wasn't just org members that were invited to that breakfast. So they were able to have a successful engagement with membership in general, just not org members. And then at ICAN sixty four, we had a similar situation where we just didn't have enough people, org members in particular, who had indicated that they would be present or were interested in the meeting. But ISOC as an organization held a reception nonetheless. And we did have, you know, reasonable engagement at that meeting. You know, that would be for ISOC or staff to report on and how they felt about their reception and dinner that we had there. So that converted. We did have, well, we had one other meeting, and we are going to have a fourth one and at the I G F next week. As you had mentioned earlier, Gonzalo, we actually had a pretty good meeting in Montreal at the I T F. A good presentation by the staff on the new member restructure in the program. So I thought that we had some good reaction from those who were there about all of that, some of the more vocal members in the past about how things have gone. And we also had a presentation on the ISOC encryption initiative and an invitation to people to reach out to staff to get involved in that. One of the key things we've tried to do with O Mac meetings is if it's going to be officially an O Mac meeting, we're always looking for if the staff want to bring presentations, we wanted to have an ask of some substance of of some sort from people. And and that's been an important thing that I think has sort of helped engagement a bit. At least it's an opportunity for outreach from staff to work members. And, you know, if you can get even just a couple more people along the way at this point in time, I I think you're getting somewhere and getting some value out of that. One of the other things I want to call out is we did, this was the second one that we did. We had an Ask Me Anything session when Andrew had first come on board and we had the I E T F in Bangkok, I think it was. We did one of those sessions too. Had an Ask Me Anything session. And I I think they're, I think they're interesting and they're good. And it's and it's useful to to have Andrew come and do those, at least informally, anybody who was in the meetings and was part of those, I've heard good things about that. So I'm hopeful that those will continue that that sort of model. So whenever we are going to have a meeting, we don't want that to be the substance of the meeting. But we definitely want it to be a part of the meeting. If Andrew's going to be around, we're going to have a meeting. That's a good thing to have. And we have appreciated that. The I G F Lynn Berlin will be next week. We've actually had last count that I heard last night was twenty four org members have indicated they will attend this particular O Mac meeting that will happen on Monday. I unfortunately will be on a plane, so I won't be a part of that. But Crystal, my co chair, will be facilitating that meeting. The principal discussion will be about the future of the I G F. And Desiree, who I know most of you, many of you certainly do know, will be helping with Crystal to facilitate that discussion. So that'll be the the principal topic there. And we're looking forward to that meeting. That'll be our our highest attended, from the point of view of org members, meeting that we've had in the, you know, year or so, a little over a year that Crystal and I have been co chair. So, again, you know, increased engagement, not not great in in absolute numbers, but just the fact that the numbers are going up is a good thing. And we want to count that a little bit as as successful right now. And then the last thing is a important highlight is the staff has put together an organizational member calendar. You'll actually see a link to that in the detailed report. It's not on the slides here, but in the in the detailed report, if you go in there, there's a link to where that is. You do need to log in to see that. It's it's hidden behind the portal. But, you know, we appreciate that that opportunity is there as a way of collecting and beginning to create an archive of activities of the O Mac. Next slide. So this is a look about our plans for next year. We're going to do a similar kind of plan. O Mac meetings, we'll have, as we did this past year, we'll have one at each of the significant events that seem to be most interesting to O Mac members. We did a survey when Crystal and I had first come on board and, you know, at the time, we kind of hadn't really gotten any driving force to go to one place. But it seemed appropriate. There's a broad spectrum of O Mac members. And, you know, we certainly got some support to going to each of the significant conferences that represent O Mac members. So we'll continue that model this year. We're looking forward to an RSA data security conference. The staff has taken to doing registration, so asking people to indicate whether they're going. So that's a good thing in in making sure that we've got the right numbers. We have not actually selected the ICAN or I E T F meetings yet. As you know, there's three a year, but we look to the staff. I want to make those decisions more when we're trying to plan out the year. I want to, you know, we want to spread the meetings out. So you have RSA in the beginning of the year, and I G F is typically the end of the year. So we want to find a way to pick an appropriate ICAN or I E T F meeting based in part on what the staff can do and what's convenient for them and what seems to make most sense. I don't want to have a discussion in the O Mac members about driving or convenience or or, you know, cost issues with respect to meetings. So I want to give the staff to have a chance to to manage some of those a bit. And then we'll look for substance, you know, what staff are going to be at a meeting, that kind of thing. And then what we can do about an agenda and see where people are going to go. We will continue, you know, a focus on engagement. As I said before, when we look for substance, we do want to get an ask from staff. We also as much as possible, we'll see if O Mac members want to indicate what they'd like to talk about. But usually, I at least this past year for myself, I have found it convenient to, you know, have the staff identify, you know, what are their initiatives. And of course, with all of the work that's been going on and the project plan and the initiative plan, I think that all of that's much clearer now. And so it's a lot easier, at least from our side, to be able to see the staff can easily come and identify what they want to drive. And the opportunity to come to an O Mac meeting and ask for engagement from people, I think, is the focus is increasing. So I think there's more there. There's always been an issue in asking O Mac members to indicate what they want to hear about. And I just think that, at least speaking for myself in this space, it just feels a little better to, as ISOC is driving its initiatives and focusing its own efforts, that we should use the O Mac meetings as an opportunity to drive the kind of engagement that you want. Since O Mac members are not stepping up to drive anything, the opportunity to drive ISOC activities is when you're contributing to discussions about the project plan and the issues. At least for myself, speaking personally, it just feels like that's a better model overall. And certainly, the ISOC organization has done a lot this past year to give people the opportunity to engage and participate in that kind of work. So I think letting the staff then take advantage of that and and driving substance seems like the right thing to do. So I'm looking forward to being able to have better substance opportunities for meetings. And hopefully, that'll drive more people to want to come to them also. So we'll see how that works this year. And in the in the same way that we have now an organizational member calendar, I think I'd like to focus some attention with the staff on improving kind of an organizational member website. Now that we're starting, we now we've had a couple of meetings, like to try to create an area where we can collect for archival purposes different things that we've done, discussions, meetings, put all of that together in a place that is a little more accessible to work members. Again, just trying to provide another step in increasing engagement. So now that we have some stuff that we can archive and put there, let's try to create a model in which we can continue to build on that and leverage that going forward. So I think that's it for this year. You know, we we easily found a person for the nomination committee and the elections committee this year. In the past, I know that's been a little bit of an issue in finding someone to volunteer. But thanks to Rob Evans and Glenn Dean, who kind of stepped up actually quite quickly to to make all of that happen. And again, you know, just another example of little bit of engagement. Things are going up a little bit. At least people are interested and want to be a part of that. So it's good that we had the opportunity to to be a part of that. So those are the the highlights and our reports to the board for this time. And look forward to the meeting on Monday. If folks get a chance to listen to that, it might be good to at least drop in and take a peek at that too, to to see who's there and who's engaged in that. So thanks and happy to entertain any questions. I would like to ask one of Kevin, as we go forward, any chance that Crystal's joined us yet or no? Okay, thanks.
Okay, good. Thank you, Jim. And yeah, we've been making, and especially, you know, Andrew, a special effort to reach out and involve people specifically, I mean, the our community into the, you know, development of the action plan. So so I hope people take the opportunity as well. Do we have any questions? Well, it
Thank you, Jim. Very informative indeed. I mean, my question is basically about the election issues. Have they been raised in any of these meetings and whether they are aware that the election timetable has changed and the voting period has shrunk to two weeks? Do you know if they are aware?
So I, no one has reached out to me and commented on that. And I have seen no discussion of it, as you would know too, on on the O Mac mailing list. So yeah, it's hard to say. I don't know if people have noticed and are paying attention or 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 I don't know which of those two situations might be there. But
We'll still do an effort before the elections promote this as well. So.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions? Just because, I mean, as I said, we we want to start the the slots in time. So we have still a few more minutes. So, you know, I noticed that you you do like I do. I always speak about organizational members, but some of the trustees are giving me a hard time that I should say organization members. So we should have a conversations about that because now I'm not alone. Okay, anyway, now now I'm not alone. So I will push back strongly on Mike now.
No, fair enough. I I should know better as a native English speaker, right? Isn't that what you're telling me?
We'll we'll take that offline. So, hey, thank you, Jim. And please keep us updated on what happens on Monday. And I hope it's indeed a big meeting and and just, you know, let's have a email exchange or call or whatever next week to to get on the same page.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, good. So before we move into into the next slot, has everyone read the the new minutes of the, you know, one hundred and forty seventh meeting that we have to approve? Because, while it, just to refresh your memory from one hour ago, while it made a comment, John basically amended or changed the minutes, and now we should be okay. So are we ready to pass the resolution now in in a couple of minutes or someone someone needs?
Well, one compliment, they only affected the private minutes. They didn't change the public minutes.
No, I know. But since we are approving both, I want
For people, for people, for people in the room who don't have access to the redacted minutes, that's why you didn't see any change.
Yeah. But for trustees, I want to make sure that nobody. Okay, okay, perfect. So just before we we jump into a list slot, we have, you know, like seven minutes. So that's plenty of time to approve the the resolution. So coming back to point three in the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the one hundred and forty seventh meeting minute meeting. As I said, this meeting went remotely in several sessions. We were recessing. And as you remember, and as John said this morning, we are approving basically a private part of the meeting and the public part. There was a, you know, sentence missing that was reported by Walid in the private part. And now John sent a link to the list and, you know, we are, we are going to approve it. So again, I need someone to move. Okay, Mike and Walid second. Okay, Mike and Walid second. And we're gonna prove the resolution by a show of hands. So yes, no abstain. Yes, votes? Abstentions? No votes? So the resolution passes unanimously.
Glenn, do you want to change your vote to abstain since? Yeah, okay.
Okay, yeah. Okay. So we, so please pay attention because we have still, I mean, so Alisa, it's not that we are just joking, it's that we have to start. So we have three minutes to kill. So Andrew is gonna talk about organization versus organizational.
Bylaws say, the bylaws say organizational.
So now, now this is when you acknowledge my, so Mike, this is when you acknowledge my great wisdom and
Well, first of all, I, of course, I always formally acknowledge your great wisdom to the, to the appropriate degree. Now that I've said that, I will say this, when I, your question about organization versus organizational is only this question, which is what is idiomatic usage? It's a question of pure grammar either is correct. And I know that you will acknowledge the wisdom.
I do, and I appreciate your distinction between the organizational members and the chapteral members.
I was having Please, let's amend everything for chapteral members because honestly, I love that so much. I now want to see it written into the, into the rules.
Yeah, I was, I was having a conversation with John about that. Okay, but jokes aside, you know, let's move on the agenda. As I said, we have a lot of remote people joining and leaving, so we are trying to stick to the, to the times that we publish. So next is point eight on the agenda, which is the IETF chair report. And thanks, Alisa, for joining us face to face today. So please go ahead.
Yeah, thank you for having me. I'm sorry I couldn't join last night. I'm quite ill, so hopefully I'll make through this, this little section, but I missed you all last night. So I think I was here one year ago and I thought it might make sense to do, just talk about some highlights of the year from the technical perspective. Important specifications that we've published and milestones that we've hit as the IETF community. And then in the second portion, I'll go over some statistics about participation in the IETF. Starting with the technical highlights, you can go to the next one. Yeah. So starting in the applications area, earlier this, or actually at the end of last year, we published the DNS over HTTPS specification, RFC 8484. Some of you might have heard about it. It's been much, much debated in the public sphere the last few months. So it got published last year and then there's been some initial deployment activity this year among browsers and resolvers and ISPs. And what I think makes this significant, among other things, is that it creates the ability for new kinds of clients to do DNS resolution and for, and for essentially anyone who can serve traffic on port 443 to become a DOE resolver. And as a result, it has raised some questions about using the DNS as a control surface and who gets to configure DNS resolution on users' clients. So in the IETF, we've been, we've had several forums for, to try to suss out what is, what is the actual work that the IETF can do to be helpful in this space? In the July meeting, we had a birds of a feather session to talk about applications doing DNS resolution. And we had another one just this week here in Singapore called application behavior considering DNS A, B, C, D. And I think, depends on how you look at it, but there was some conclusive results from, at least from the one this week, which was that a lot of the bigger policy issues and issues around best practices concerning configuration were leaving out of scope for the IETF. I think that's, it's not really engineering work for us to do. But there is a lot of interest in doing some engineering work to make it, to make the deployment of DOE and other encrypted DNS transports more smooth on a variety of different kinds of networks. So we're going to be looking to do that in 2020. Also, in the applications area, we've had the web real-time communication work that's been going on actually for eight years now. And it's a suite of 4D documents which are collectively designed to allow for peer-to-peer audio, video and messaging via browsers. And I think it's the biggest cluster of RFCs we will have ever published, like all, they're all interdependent, so they, like, none of them can get published until they're all done. So there's 40 of them and they are in the RFC editors queue likely to be published fairly soon. So that's a huge milestone and a really large piece of work that many in the community have been, have been involved in. So moving on to the Internet of Things, I know this is a topic of interest at ISOC as well. This year, we published the manufacturer usage description specification, MUD, RFC 8520. So what MUD does is it lets the end devices signal to the network what kind of access they, they need and what kind of functionality they require. And this allows for the creation of access control policies that limit what IoT devices can do and limit the damage that they can do to others on the network. So this has been a huge draw at IETF hackathons. There's been lots of people working on different tools and interoperable MUD components to be able to create, create systems around the MUD framework. And at this point, there's a lot of interest in doing MUD extensions and, and sort of using this as the base to build more functionality on top to make IoT devices more manageable in home and enterprise networks. The other one that we did this year was object security for constrained restful environments, or OSCOR. This was published in July and has kind of the flavor of a lot of the IoT work that we've done at, at the IETF. Looking at networks that have really highly constrained devices in terms of memory or processing. If you, if you look at the way these, these things are often networks, they require a lot of intermediary nodes in order to make them work because they can't have all of the processing power themselves. And that creates kind of a security vulnerability because then you have all of these boxes in the middle that are able to potentially snoop on the traffic. So OSCOR provides end-to-end protection for, for application data for IoT devices. And at this meeting, we actually had the, the first session of a new working group called Lake, Lightweight Authenticated Key Exchange. And Lake is basically building a new security primitive that could be used together with OSCOR. So we're trying to build off of the existing work there. So that's some highlights from IoT. There's obviously a lot more in all of these areas. I'm just kind of picking some of the seminal ones from the year. So routing, earlier this year, we published the extended message support for, for BGP for the Border Gateway Protocol. Actually, just last month. So BGP is a very old protocol, hard to change, doesn't change too often. And also, as a result of that, its message size when originally designed was, was quite small, 4,096 bytes. So what, what this specification does is it expands the potential message size of BGP messages to 65,535 bytes. And basically what this allows for is long-term support for new BGP applications. So things like BGP security or informed kind of traffic engineering that you can do with BGP and also segment routing, which is the other big highlight of the year and an area of work that's been drawing huge amount of interest and activity in the IETF. So segment routing is basically a routing architecture where the instructions for how to forward the packets through the network are embedded in the packets themselves. And what this means is that you can, you can create networks that don't have to maintain information or state in the network in order to do the routing, which is a nice optimization. It's designed to run natively either over IPv6 or MPLS. The MPLS specifications are a little bit further along and there's been a ton of interests, including at this meeting, many hours of presentations about segment routing over IPv6. It's been a six-year project already and we're aiming to get the first cluster of 15 MPLS SR documents done by the end of this year and the, and the kind of first two on the IPv6 side. The last one is security. Sometimes I tell people that we work in the Internet Security Task Force now because everything we do is security. And last year, we talked about TLS. I'll talk about TLS in a second, but this year, some of the same folks involved in the TLS work have turned their attention to encrypted server name identification. So we've seen, I think, a progression over the years in the way that surveillance of web traffic in particular has gotten progressively harder because we're encrypting more and more of the, of the pieces of, that make up a single traffic flow. So we've seen increased deployment of transport layer security TLS. We've, we're encrypting the DNS transports as I, as I spoke about earlier. And there's been more and more multiplexing of traffic on a single IP address, which, which makes it harder to, to snoop on. So server name indication, which reveals the name of the server that you're trying to connect to, has been kind of a, an outstanding gap in all of this. We encrypt all these other things, but this isn't encrypted. It still provides a way to leak information. So there's been an initiative to encrypt it. And this year, we have approved the problem statement in this area for publication. It's in the RFC editors queue. And then the working group is working on the actual solution to be able to deploy the encrypted SNI. On other news in TLS, so we published TLS 1.3 last year and the deployment has been really rapid. So at this point, something between 22 and 26% of connections from major browsers are encrypted using TLS 1.3. That's actually as of August of 2019. So that's like compared to, compared to 1.2, like it's, you can't even, you can't even compare. I think TLS 1.3 saw more deployment in its first five months since it was published than 1.2 saw in its first five years. So it's, it's really phenomenal. And that's a, you know, that's a testament to the way that the specification was developed, which was very much, use this feedback loop where the people who are going to be deploying it were also the people who are writing the spec. And where many interoperable implementations were developed right alongside it so that it was essentially ready to ship when we, when we published the specification. There's also interestingly, a strong correlation between server support for TLS 1.3 and support for other, like reading your blog post, Sean. Sean has written a nice blog post from which I drew these, these talking points. There's a strong correlation between server support for TLS 1.3 and support for other modern protocols like HTTP2 and IPv6. So it's, it's kind of neat to see that, that sort of bundle of IETF protocols that we've been trying to get out into the world. They all sort of correlate together. Like, once you can convince server operators to do one of them, then they're doing many of the others. So that's, that's pretty neat. We also this year published the automated, automatic certificate management environment. I always forget what that stands for, ACVI, the ACVI specification, which essentially allows for the, to automate the process of issuing and verifying certificates, which makes it easier for web properties to use TLS. And that's another reason why we've seen a really rapid uptake of TLS in general, not just 1.3. And then lastly, on post-quantum cryptography, there's definitely growing interest in this area in the IETF. We standardized a couple of hash-based signature algorithms. And at this meeting in particular, there was some discussion about how to support post-quantum or sort of multi-algorithm techniques in the, in a public key infrastructure. The document that's referenced here in the slides, if you want to take a look, is, is sort of our set of guidelines for cryptographic agility. So sort of paving the way for when there are algorithms that are quantum safe, that our protocols will be ready to, to be able to change from the algorithms we use today to the ones that are, that might be available in the future. So we're trying to get ready for that. And then I think the next section is on just some participation statistics for the year. I thought this might be interesting to look at. So looking back over two years, actually, this is the in-person attendance at IETF meetings. We had two very, very similar years. So you can see kind of when we meet at the same continent at the same time of year, we get roughly the same number of people showing up. If we look at remote participation, bit of an upward trend. This also kind of correlates a little bit with time zone. So, you know, we see larger populations dialing in from the parts of the world that are closer to the time zone where we have more participants. But overall, this is, I mean, this is phenomenal. This is not just people who registered. This is the number of people who joined at least one session remotely. So we've really dramatically expanded our reach in terms of people who can listen and follow along and participate in the IETF by having a remote participation facility.
Alisa, does that number include if someone is here and at the same?
It does not. No, yeah, yeah. Because that is very common. A lot of people come to the meeting and then dial in remotely. Looking at the hackathon, so I think people know the hackathon is an event that we run on the weekend before every IETF meeting. It's a free event. Anybody can join and work together with people on their team to, you know, further develop IETF protocols. So again, a really nice upward trend here. We've had, like, we've been running out of food and having to add tables to rooms and things to be able to accommodate everybody who shows up for this. And it's really nice to see, actually, even here in Singapore, when our, you know, attendance at the IETF meeting tends to be a little lower, that we've still, you know, seen the upward trend in hackathon participation. And we always have also a pretty significant number of first time people, new people, locals who come, students who come, because it's on the weekend and it's free. So it's, it's really providing a great service to the IETF community. And then the last one, because
One quick question on hackathons. I think one thing we've been trying to do across a bunch of ISOC stuff is measure less in terms of, you know, people, pure people numbers and more in terms of impact. So I was wondering if you had kind of any highlights of kind of concrete things that have come out of the hackathon?
Hmm, that's, that's, that's a good question, actually. And we've been kind of talking, like kicking around, having more, some of the working groups want to have more structure, like, you can't, you can't get your update into the document until you, until you've like proven that you can implement it at the hackathon. I think actually there was one from this week. Let me just see. It was a really great example from this week. Maybe not. Sorry, my, my yesterday is kind of gone because I was sick. I mean, there's, there's several working groups that they, you know, half of the working group session is spent kind of going back and forth between, like, well, we figured this out at the hackathon, so we can clear this issue in the spec. So quick, obviously, is, is one of these. I think, you know, TLS does this as well, the HTTP working group. So there's some of them that are, it's like fairly well-integrated into the working group process at this point.
That's great. Thank you.
So of course, the work doesn't only happen at the meetings. It also happens online, very much so in between the meetings. So this just shows you our number of unique mailing, mailing list senders across all the IETF lists on a, on a monthly basis. So this is pretty steady as well. And interestingly, you know, the numbers are roughly similar to what the in-person attendance is, although the groups of people are not, are not exactly the same. So there's lots of people who participate on the mailing list who don't come to the meetings and vice versa. So the total population is, is larger than, than either number.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, that was, that was very useful. I mean, to get a kind of overview of the most important work in the different areas. So thanks a lot for that. And yeah, and it's also interesting that the pattern that we see, like, you know, many people are going to Europe, North America, a bit less in Asia. So we see a pattern every year. When are we switching the, the meeting so that the Asian meeting doesn't happen in November?
In 2022. So in, yeah, and so in 2021, we will go to Europe twice and North America once. And then in March of 2022, we're aiming to have a, a meeting in Asia. We've had a lot of difficulty We've had a lot of difficulty finding venues that can accommodate us in this timeframe in Asia. Japan is a place we love to go to, and there's these huge medical conferences in Japan in November all the time. So the venues get booked up. And and there's other reasons that make it difficult. So we're trying to switch the timing to give us more choices of venue selection in Asia.
Thanks. So, I mean, just for the trustees to be clear, then we will have Asia in spring. And then in summer will be still North America and in Europe or?
Probably. Yes. Yeah.
Okay, Sean.
So one of the, I just want to make it clear that I think one of the requirements is the one 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 star thing. And that over time, we will even it back out. So like, we're not skipping Asia, right?
Yeah, I mean, we're trying to get, we're trying to be roughly even over time. It's not like every single year has to be exactly the same. Yeah.
Good. Any more questions?
Yeah, good. Now, the things like my laptop broke, so now I have this protocol with Kevin. So I've been trying to fix it.
It's called the Whisper Protocol?
Yeah. Mike.
Just a, just a follow up to the earlier thing. With with regard to the, I guess, forty R F Cs that are associated with Web R T C. You said, when you, when you talk about the fact that they're sort of in the R F C editors queue, are they going to be all reviewed in succession or all at once? Or how does that work? I just want to understand it better.
Yeah, so yeah, this will, this will be a particularly special one. So, so what happens with the the sort of basic process for the R F C editors queue is a document, it's an internet draft, gets approved for publication, you know, goes all the way through the whole I E T F process. That our technical leadership, the I S G approves it for publication. And then it goes into the R F C editors queue. And they, you know, it's, it's a queue, right? So things come in, things go out. When they're, when they have an editor who's available to edit a document, they begin their editing, which is all about, you know, making sure it conforms to our style guide. They paginate it. They do all kinds of things which introduce changes to the document. And when they're done making those changes, then the document goes into, if if all of the documents that it normatively references are also in the same state, also ready to progress, then it goes into a state called auth forty eight, which is a funny name because it was intended to mean that within forty eight hours, the authors would review these changes and approve them. And then, and then it would go on. And so, of course, now auth forty eight sometimes lasts for like years, but not usually years, usually months, probably not weeks. So all of these documents will be edited by an editor, and then they will go into auth forty eight. So they will go back to all of the authors. And then the authors have to approve the editorial changes. And as those editorial changes get approved in each one, then the cluster will be able to be published once, once all the authors have given their approvals.
I mean, the reason I ask is it seemed like a python swallowing a horse, you know? I mean, I wonder how, you know, how you do it all at once.
Yeah, yeah. So there's, there's like eight editors, I think. And or something like that, eight or maybe there's up to like ten now. So I talked to the R F C editor this week. So they have, many of them are assigned now solely to this cluster. And then they've reserved a few who are processing the rest of the documents so that, you know, the queue doesn't get completely stuck. But the, the other trick about this is that we also have updated the format of the R F Cs for the first time in ten years or something, longer than that, forty years. Okay. Oh, I didn't know that V two was was the was essentially that old. So, so that happened in the last month as well, which has slowed things down considerably. Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I think Web R C must have been started when Richard and I were the A Ds or even before.
Yeah, the working group was chartered eight years ago.
So maybe it was when I was A D with Robert. Yeah, something like that. So, yeah, this, this is a long time ago. Okay, any other questions, comments? Okay, good. But thanks a lot. I mean, we know, yeah, you were not feeling well. So, so, you know, highly appreciated that you came to give the presentation.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Alyssa. Okay, and Jason just got here. So are you ready to? Okay, good, then let's do that. Now the the mic is off. Yeah, now it's working.
Now, so it's red. All right, good. Good morning, everybody. Thanks. My name is Jason Livinggood. I am the Chair of the I E T F L L C Board. And by the way, a former I S O C board member, so it's nice to be back talking to you all. Our board and the L C formed, well, the L C formed a little bit more than a year ago, but our inaugural board formed in March. And so we've had a few months' time to do quite a lot of work. If you can go to the next slide, please. These are our board members. I think you're familiar with many or most, if not all of these folks. Next slide. You know, we publicize all of our board meetings. And what we're trying to do, really because of community expectations, is to try to adopt a position of sort of radical transparency, meaning be absolutely open about all the business that we're conducting, invite community participation and so on. And so part of that is making available, you know, well in advance, our meeting agendas, meeting times and so on, so that people may attend. Next slide. So we've been very, very, very busy for the past few months, and we've gotten a lot of really important stuff done. This really ticks off all the major things that we had as goals for this calendar year. Most importantly, we've hired a permanent I E T F Executive Director, our first, you know, full time permanent Executive Director. That person is Jay Daly, with whom I'm sure you're familiar. Jay's an absolute superstar, a player, and really the type of person that we needed in this role. We had an interim person who was in place for about two years and did a great job of transitioning us from the I A O C under their sort of earlier administrative support set up to the new one. And we appreciate her efforts. I'll mention that later, but Jay is really outstanding. And we, as a board, look forward to being able to sort of pivot to focus on the more strategic things and not have to be in the day to day details. As well, we finalized all of our policies for the L C. These are things like a whistleblower policy, anti harassment, code of conduct, conflict of interest and so on. And again, our objective is to set a very high bar for conduct and transparency with our community. And certainly to the extent that, you know, you all revise policies over time, you know, feel free to take a look at them. When we developed those, we did a community consultation process. So with the I E T F community, we did a webinar that was recorded and people could watch. We put the policies on GitHub that people could comment on, open issues on, and did a series of revisions as a result of that. When we filed or finalized all the policies, we also filed our first conflict of interest policies for all of the board members. And then we had two different memos that were pertaining to sort of remediation efforts, if you will, on how to manage potential conflicts of interest. And those are all there on the website for people to see. We also announced a number of contract awards, in particular for a C P A firm. While we've been great partners with and have been supported really well by A M S, who has been running all of our meetings for many years, they were also doing all of our financial services. And so it's a tough position. We identified as a board a risk in having your largest supplier also sort of managing your books. And so we've hired an independent C P A firm to begin to manage that for us. We felt that was a better practice. And we've got a number of other R F Ps that are due to close out. And actually, one of the first things that we did when we formed as a board, we had a bunch of contracts that were set to expire in like the August, September, October timeframe. And we just felt like one of the first things we did was kick those all out, extended them to the end of the year to give us more time to deliberate and make the right assessments and decisions. So all of those contracts will be in place by end of year, which is a big deal for us. And of course, our first full year budget that we've done as a board, which is being finalized now. When we did the original funding decision or assessment under the interim board with the Internet Society, we did like a two or three year projection, and that was based on a lot of estimations of what our actual costs would be. So this fiscal year, we've really gotten a better sense, a real sense of what the costs are. So, for example, having to procure our own different types of insurance, knowing what the actual salary will be for the Executive Director, and really just getting a better handle on costs in general. So we feel like we're going into fiscal twenty twenty with a much, much more accurate view of what our actuals will be. And that'll put us in a better position for when we, you know, sometime later in twenty twenty, begin a conversation with Sandy and Andrew about go forward. So that that should be good. And that's out, of course, for community comment. Next slide. So this is just background on Jay. I think everyone knows and we can skip past. And then, of course, we did a thank you at our plenary for Portia, who is the outgoing interim Executive Director. She's in place until the end of the year. And so we, what we wanted to do as a board is ensure that there was a period of time for transition. And, you know, sort of, you know, incentives around that to encourage a strong transition and make sure it was smooth. And she's been doing a great job of that, so we appreciate that. Next slide. So what comes next for us? We've agreed on the policies, but of course, that's only the first step. Of course, we have to roll them out. And in particular, this means that people affected, what we call covered individuals of those policies have to be informed that they're affected and then trained to explain like, what does this policy mean? And how does that mean you need to conduct yourself? Or what responsibilities does that give you and so on? And then having a compliance program. And the compliance program is part of the agreement between I S O C and the L L C. So ensuring that that is in place is of course important. Finishing up before end of year, all the different R F P processes and the budget, those are certainly on a path of completion. And then, as we go into the first quarter, really, the big work activity for us is to complete a strategic assessment of what our fundraising and sponsorship approach will be. So for us, this is how do we want to approach potential sponsors that might want to sponsor the I E T F or might want to contribute to the I E T F endowment? And we want to do that in a very strategic way and decide, for example, even will our approach vary by region of the world? How will we want to, you know, work with people that will help do that fundraising or sponsorship for us? So we have a lot of questions to go through. And one of our board members, Peter Van Roestra, helped lead us through an initial process of a SWOT test. So strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats, and then political, economic, social and technical. And that helped sort of level set both for the board as well, sort of for the I E T F. How might we be affected by, in particular, a lot of external change? And so that will inform that process that we go through. And that's one of our critical things for next year. And then, of course, you know, putting that into an action plan. And then the final point, which I think, thanks to Sean's efforts, you know, we're really almost done, but doing an investment policy statement, basically, what's our outline of what we're trying to achieve with our reserve fund and with our endowment? How should those things be invested, et cetera? And we've really just been using the same providers that you all have done. So we appreciate all the due diligence that you've done selecting those people. So thank you. Next slide. I won't bore you with all the details. And tonight, chart, basically, Sean is on point here and managing the dollars and cents justified. Next slide. And we have lots of ways to contact us, obviously. Next slide. That should be it. Yep. So that's it. And I do want to say certainly thank you very much this year and last for I S O C support of us not just financially, but administratively, getting through this transition, especially because there are a lot of resources that we've been sharing for so long that are I S O C badged people, for example. And we really appreciate that. It's provided a real base of support for the I E T F of years. And everyone appreciates it greatly. And as well, I think, have appreciated Andrew's reiteration lately of support in light of all the changes with, you know, upcoming changes with the P I R. And I think that that has helped the community become very comfortable with the situation. To the point, much to my surprise, there were literally no questions about that at our plenary. And I really appreciate that. I think that's a reflection of, you know, Andrew's efforts on the different lists to sort of make people comfortable and, you know, make very clear that, you know, the support is unwavering. Nothing changes, you know, keep going ahead. And that's helped everybody, I think, say, okay, everything's good. We can keep focusing on technical work at I E T F. So thank you for that.
Yeah, exactly. And I also had a conversation with Jason just to stress that nothing changes from that point of view. So, yeah, no, I mean, I think, thanks for the summary. I think that's very useful. Regarding the investments, I mean, we have the two last treasures of I S O C. So I think that's like, you know, it would be impossible to basically have a better coordination and make sure that, you know, we are on the same page. So that's, that's appreciated. As I mentioned, we are also going through a revision of our conflict of interest policies. And as you know, we've been basically working with all the supporting organizations that we have been creating, like the L L C Foundation, et cetera. So in that sense, that's why we need to look into the whole picture. So I sent the trustees the conflict of interest rules that you guys have proven and the policies because I thought it was really good for people to look, look into them. I think they are very clear. I mean, they cover the specific cases that may be problematic, but at the same time, they give you freedom to use common sense when, you know, analyzing a particular situation. So I think that was really good.
Yeah, thanks. And, you know, I think the code of conduct and conflict of interest sort of go together as well as the travel expense because there's some aspect of it there. But for us, you know, this is such a small community, and there are so many interrelationships. We wanted to try to set a very high bar, and in particular, on just transparency about things so that there wouldn't be these, you know, lingering doubts about, you know, some sort of like smoky backroom deals and people trying to do crazy things. And so we've tried to just say, we'll start off with a lot of transparency, and that can drive a lot of the conversations.
Exactly. I mean, one thing that we are looking specifically that, I mean, just F Y I, is that now that we have several subsidiaries or supporting organizations, there may be some conflict of interest that they are not adhering to one of them. But maybe we want to avoid like having people doing certain things in different supporting organizations. So that's something that we are looking into. We haven't decided how to capture that. But first, we want to get on the same page regarding, you know, what we want to do and what we want, you know, to be disallowed and allowed. And then we will, we will take it from there. So we will keep you guys updated. So, yes, this is kind of one of the things we're doing. Any, any questions for Jason, John? I don't, Mike?
Yeah, so this is another question. I just want to say, I'm really impressed with the thoroughness, the commitment to best practices, including but not limited to transparency. It's all very positive and really exemplary. So thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, we wanted to do something that was, you know, in line with the way we approach technical standards development. Right? So it's the same thing, very open.
John?
No, I agree. This was crystal clear. I was wondering, now that the I E T F endowment is passing three million dollars, if you started to give any thought as to what it is for?
Yeah, that's part of our first quarter planning retreat to to go through that and to think about what's the long term goal for that. And we'll see. So to be continued, we'll let you know next time.
Since five hundred dollars, if it is mine, I get to tell you.
Yeah, I thought, I mean, some, I'm not sure if it was seen in Alyssa's slide on your slides. I was reviewing them when I got them. There were like a fairly substantial return on on the endowment. So maybe you want to, either of you want to comment on that? Because I guess, I mean, when I was reading, that was kind of one of the things that, that, you know, got my attention. Or Sean?
So if you don't mind, I'll take it. One of the interesting things was that the way I did the numbers, right? We had a contribution that came over in March. So I just went to, I do what my financial advisor did. It's just from January to the date. So that's why it looks crazy because it was one hundred and twenty three on three million. So it kind of like maybe skewed the number a little bit.
So that was one of the things. The second is the half a million return on investment.
Yeah. So I mean, that's, that's the problem was the like one hundred and twenty three, it was a contribution from right, right? So they pledged one hundred and twenty three over, or sorry, a hundred thousand euros over ten years or a million, or whatever it is over ten years. And so that, that's why it came. But also, like, when we immediately took the funds from I S O C, we figured that it was better to actually invest it along the same lines that I S O C had because it was, it was the right thing to do because essentially we figured the people that gave us the money wanted the money to be invested basically in the same way. So, yeah.
Yeah. And one quick note on investments as we do that. Yeah. And one quick note on investments as we do that assessment and we sort of finish the investment policy statement that guides that. You know, I think our view is especially at the size of funding that we have, you know, we are not going to be working with like the world's cutting edge head, you know, cutting edge hedge funds and beating the market. So, you know, we don't anticipate that. What we can control are our costs. And so we want to make those as low as possible. So for example, given the choice between an index fund, which is managed by the investment company and one that is managed by, say, a Vanguard or Fidelity. You know, the more open one with a lower cost is always preferred rather than having an extra one or two percent of cost.
Yeah, that makes sense. And yeah, and that's along the line, but we were deciding in the, in the initial LLC. I'm talking also about, I mean, like we have like Alyssa, Glenn and myself, we were all with Ted, we were all part of the initial LLC. And we knew that you guys were going to have like a full play in the first month. So, so we are actually very happy to see that you guys have been processing through. And, and as you said, I mean, delaying things that they weren't so urgent and, and getting, you know, to basically complete those action points. So I mean, I think that's like great to see. Yeah. Thanks for that.
Thank you.
Any, yeah, Glenn?
I'm not sure, Jason, if you guys supported the pre-ITF stuff in India just last week?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. No, I'm just saying Fred Baker was a speaker, but it was an excellent event. It's gonna be in Mumbai next year. But it did hit the Times, the Indian Times twice. So ITF got some.
Cool. That's awesome. Great.
Thank you, Glenn. Any, any other questions? Okay, perfect. Thank you, Jason. Thanks a lot. And thanks for joining in person as well. It's, it's good to touch base in person every now and then. So next we have Glenn, who is in the room as well. Thank you, Glenn. Not, not you.
Lots of Glenns.
Yeah, exactly. So please go ahead.
Hey, so thank you for having me in warm Singapore as we're all bundled up in sweaters here. It's chilly. Yeah, ITF Trust. So, you know, as part of the LLC pull from the IOC at ITF, there was some changes made to the ITF Trust. In the past, the ITF Trust was composed of the members of the IOC. In fact, the original rule was to become a member of the trust, you had to be a member of the IOC. When we shut down the IOC, we had a bit of a problem last year, which required us to make an amendment to the trust rules. Because when the IOC went away, technically we had nobody eligible to be a trustee. And so there was a bit of a hiccup there. The lawyers took care of that. And we eventually developed a new program where we had a new set of requirements for selecting trustees. And for the first time last year, they actually selected them directly as opposed to bringing them in from the IOC. And as you can see, we have five trustees up there. One of them, of course, is John in the room. We also have Kathleen Meariarty, who's our treasurer, Joel Halpern, and Stefan Wriggar. So five of them selected, next slide, oh, actually up there, four are selected by the ITF. That structure is three via the noncom and one by IESG. And we have one selected by yourselves, the four trustees at ISOC. Good job. Thank you. Next slide, please. So this is a bit of history because, you know, I think of all the pieces that we have that we talked about around the ITF community. If the trust is possibly the least well-understood, in fact, in many cases, people have no idea it exists or even what it does. So I thought I'd just do a very quick recap here. So essentially the trust is a Virginia registered trust. It's not a corporation. It's not anything else. It's a trust. It's a, it's a nonprofit. It's also independent of ISOC and the ITF LLC. That's kind of an interesting sort of artifact, but it's also how we operate. We have a website here that's also independent, trustees.itf.org. When you go to that website, you'll be underwhelmed unless you like artifacts of history, because it is a really rocky, a 1995 design of how you do a website. More on that in a few minutes. And we have a very small budget. Our actual run rate expenditure wise is around $65,000, $68,000 a year. And when you add in a special project or anything like that, it comes up to around $100,000 a year. So compared to pretty much most organizations in the space, we are tiny. And that's fine. We get our job done. A couple of things, trustees are volunteers. They're not compensated. We don't provide travel support or anything else like that. We have a very small admin staff provided to us by the ITF secretariat. And we have several sets of lawyers. We have two law firms we have connections and relationships with that provide, one does trademarks for us and registrations, and the other provides a general counsel advice. And, and finally, we also have insurance needs. One of the interesting things about being a trustee of the ITF Trust is that because of unusual legal requirements globally, trusts in many places are not allowed to actually register trademarks. And so the actual trustees themselves own the trademarks. And so if you actually go look up the trademark for the ITF, turns out those five trustees, they own it. And I've often joked, you guys better behave or we'll take the name and we'll go build our own standards organization. I just need to get two other people to agree with me. So, um, we have no plans officially to do that. We also have diverse funding sources. So this is something that was explained to me when I came as a trustee. I guess actually Kathy was the one who originally kicked this off back in the day. Where the trust, you know, historically got a lot of its funding or all its funding for a long time exclusively from ISOC. And then that relationship was transferred to the LLC. A few years ago, there was an additional set of tasks put on the trustees, which was to do fundraising. However, the fundraising we seek is really tiny. They're typically $5,000. And usually what you find is that people at the end of a calendar year have in their budget a little bit of extra money and we go, could we have it? Please? And they go, $5,000 share here it is. And we've been pretty good. The target of 2018 was, and 2019 was $20,000. We made our $20,000 this year. I think we exceeded it by 5,000. And we have the same modest target for next year, which is, you know, easy because we have a very small budget. So small amounts have helped big time with our tiny little budget. Next slide, please.
So Dean and Glenn, what type of reach out you are doing? Because yeah, some people asked me basically during this week, like, hey, do you have 5,000 euros, whatever? And I mean, we can do that, but I thought it was kind of like ad hoc in a.
It is very, it is very ad hoc. We are not trying to build a big fund here. So we're not doing a big outreach where we say, you know, on a, with a banner, with a fundraiser or anything like that. Our goal is to create a diversity of funding sources. So we're not looking for large sums of money. We are looking for more in terms of numbers. So for instance, for this year, we have four, four diverse funding sources in addition to the LLC. We're not looking to grow that big. We're also not trying to develop a large pot of money. We're really trying to just maintain a very small reserve so that we can maintain cash flow through the year. And, and we deliberately choose to keep the funds within the trust very small in case somebody decides to take a.
A legal action.
A legal action against us. There isn't anything really to go after. So, and for this year, we had contributions from, so far from Google, NBC Universal and a few others that are still in process. So I can't name them yet. So what does the trust do? We hold the IP assets for the ITF and for other groups such as IANA. We, and what are IP assets? IP assets consists of copyrights. So the RFCs that the ITF produces are copyrighted. The ITF Trust owns the copyrights on those RFCs. We also do trademarks. So things like the ITF logo and the IANA marks, the IANA name. And that, those trademarks both are for things like the logo for the ITF, but they also come out in things like the domain name registrations for those organizations and those services. So for instance, you know, the way it's registered is of the five trustees, you need to get a majority of them to agree to take an action around domain names to sell them off and stuff like that. So there's a control point there as well. And finally, we also own software. A lot of people forget about the software component. Logic is, you know, it's the ITF's tools, that's stuff which are open source to begin with, but we still do own that and we are responsible for maintaining those things. And effectively for all of these things, we are tasked with licensing them. So the, the sense of the ITF community when the, this was set up was, we want to get the RFCs into people's hands. We want to make it easy for people to use them. So now leads to question, well then what does the trust do? What do we do is we make sure that when people do take them and use them, they use them properly. That way, we do not want people to do use them improperly, which would cause potentially the ITF to lose ownership of those assets. So for instance, trademarks, you must make sure that you protect your trademark legally, or you can lose the right to own that trademark. Similarly, with copyrights, we make sure that if you take ITF RFCs and you publish them, that you properly identify them, put the proper, you know, notices in your republication. We want to make sure that a republication doesn't result in somebody else creating new rights around RFCs that would deprive the ITF of a freedom of action in the future. And it's, next slide. So we have decided to undertake a big project this year. We're going to redo the ITF trustee website. It is old. And not just the look of it. One of the problems we're having is that the CMS that supports in the backend is old, inclusion. It's causing problems. We just discovered, for instance, that while we had faithfully been publishing all of our meeting minutes for transparency, they weren't getting properly published on the web because the CMS hiccuped and wasn't publishing that page. It's very frustrating. So we've undertaken initial design and planning for next year. And we put money in the budget as a special project to have that website redesigned. And as part of that web design, it's not just the look and feel we're going to change. We are going to also do a review of all the materials on the website. The ITF Trust has been around since for about 14, 15 years now. We want to make sure that everything that is published there is up to date in the most correct fashion. And that as part of that review and republishing, it becomes even easier for the community to get access to it and to understand it. Next slide. Are we done? Awesome. Any questions?
Thank you, Glenn. Wally?
Thank you, Glenn. Yes. Since you're independent and apparently that should be showing off, don't you, aren't you concerning using your own domain name? IITFtrust.org does exist.
Well, so technically, these domain names are, are our domain names. We actually only ITF domain name. So we're not planning on changing the domain name. There is some domains that have been registered for, for use around office suites from Google that we use for the backend tools and some stuff like that. But we're going to keep the domain as is. There's no plans to change it.
I think John wanted, actually, yeah, there is, the domain names are a particular mess because the domain names that the trust owns are actually just the IANA ones. And all the ITF domain names belong to sort of random historic registrants, which is one of the topics we might want to clean up.
Yes, we do have some cleanup to do. There's been, I would say, with the focus on LLC and the focus on so many things over the last couple of years, I think some of the historic trusts sometimes have not been on top of every little micro detail of every registration necessary to track. And so one of the things we undertake, have undertaken this year and will complete in 2020 is an assessment of all the assets that the trust does own and make sure that they are properly registered and maintained.
Sean wanted to.
So I understand, sorry, this is Sean Turner. I guess I kind of understand this is probably just a US-based thing. But I'm trying to make sure you get a broad source of people and you're not looking for a large number of people to donate. Have you considered doing something like setting up Amazon Smile to make sure that you can, you know, because you're 5013C and getting smaller donations from a larger swath of people?
It's not something we have considered. It's an interesting idea. I'll take it back to the trustees and we'll chat about it. Again, we're pretty small. So it's, it's been working and which is why we haven't really worked too hard at it. The goals that we set were $20,000. We achieved those last couple of years. We've looked to expect to achieve next year. But thanks for suggestions.
Thank you. Any more questions? Okay. Thanks a lot. Greatly appreciated. Okay. So that concludes our morning session, which is up to agenda point number 10. And then we're going to break for lunch. So, you know, for remote participants, we will be back at one, which means in one hour and 15 minutes. Okay, good. So welcome back. We had a lunch break. And, and now we're going to start the afternoon session. So we're going to have, you know, around a couple of hours, basically with, with three agenda points. So first, you will see that tomorrow we will be talking about the action plan and budget and everything for 2020. So today we are actually talking about this year's plan, 2019. So we chose to, to schedule it in different days to even, you know, stress the difference so that, you know, we, we don't get confused. And more importantly, we don't confuse any of the, any in the audience. So Andrew is going to run the presentation. So you had like a one hour envelope to present the report.
And it's very unlikely that this will take all of an hour to talk. So, you know, obviously you can stop me at any time or you can wait until the end and so on. This is the, our, our report on impact indicators and on the project process, progress from last year over the, or I guess this year, on the 2019 one. So about a year ago, I presented to all of you the plan for this year. This is the report on how this is working and, and how we have, you know, spent our, spent our time and effort. Next, please. So the, the, the first piece of this is to remind you what it was that we talked about when presenting this last year. So you'll recall that we had a fundamental idea that we had topics that we were working on. And then we had ways in which we were doing it. And that was represented in this diagram to the right. So these areas of focus were really connecting the world, improving technical security and building trust, all of this, which was an effort to shape the future of the internet. And in order to do this, we, we wanted to make sure that we fostered a collaborative approach, that we ensure that, you know, people work together on these things, that we made our voice stronger and that we built up our community. And so there were projects that were associated with all of these things. On connecting the world, we worked obviously on our community network campaign. We worked on the internet exchange points and interconnections. And, and a piece of that was the support that we received in partnership with Facebook, particularly with respect to internet exchanges in Africa. The work on improving technical security was focused primarily on manners. The mutually assured norms for routing security. And this is, is an area where I think we've had a certain amount of success and I'll be talking about it in a moment. In building trust, we worked on our campaign around the internet of things. In order to make sure that we fostered a collaborative approach, we continued working on the internet governance community and, and supporting it. We've worked over the course of the year on our brand and online presence. And of course, the community building really was focused around our chapters and the way that we engage with them. Next slide, please. Now, these slides are kind of I charty. So I want to warn you about that. Yeah, just a little bit. They're text heavy. And this is because really this is a report to you. So I'm going to talk a little bit about each one of them, but you've received this deck in advance and of course it will be posted. So, you know, I hope that this is, that this is useful. We, we set a couple of impact indicators. So generally speaking, when we had one of these areas last year, I, I tried to make sure that everything that we had had impact indicators in them. So we could tell whether we were, you know, doing things well or we were doing things poorly. And to make sure that if we, you know, didn't see the progress that we wanted, we could either correct course or we could decide that actually this was an activity that wasn't worth doing. On, in, in connecting the world, we had a number of things having to do with people supporting us. And the first one was a number of governments that would publicly support, fund, or change their regulations or policies in order to support community networks. Now, this is a real challenge in fact, because a lot of community networks, you know, could be built in lots of different ways if only it weren't illegal to do so. And now I know you might be thinking to yourself, yeah, lots of stuff could happen if only it weren't illegal to do so. But this is a case where the regulations are really designed for a different, a different kind of technology than in fact, the technology that we have available to us. So the regulations are effectively lagging the kinds of things that we could be doing. And those kinds of things would benefit the people who have the hardest time connecting to the internet. A lot of the time, quite frankly, the regulations benefit people who are very large corporations who have no intention of connecting those remote people. And, and so what we have seen is that we, you know, we need to, to work on that. That's a big part of the regulatory story here. Well, we did get four of the four governments that we were willing to do this. You might think to yourself, G4 isn't very many. Yeah, you try convincing governments to change their fundamental policies that they've been hanging on to. Yeah, you try convincing governments to change their fundamental policies that they've been hanging on to since the dawn of radio in a year. So so the team has actually done a fantastic job on this. Yet better, we had development agencies and international development banks and so on changing their funding models in order to support this. And we were we were aiming at just two. Because, you know, people like they got multi-year granting cycles and so on. It's very hard to move them. Well, five of the two that we were aiming at have signed up for this. So I think that what we can say is actually there's a hunger for for this kind of for this kind of effort. And I think that that's a really important part of what the of what the team has found this year that working with partners and working with people influencing governments to to understand you know, not to lobby them for for the regulatory change, but rather to understand what the options are before them. It's not that hard really to change people's minds about this, but we need to continue that that effort because there are lots and lots of people who are not going to be connected by other ways. I will share a mildly amusing story about this because I was at the U N General Assembly this year, and I was invited to the broadband commission to talk about about community networks in particular, and we were talking about about this topic. And one of the commissioners, and I won't say who, went at me and said, this is ridiculous. You can't possibly do this like one little network at a time. The scale of this is never going to work that way. And all I could think was, how does he think the first half of the internet was connected? Like, we did it one network at a time, and that's how we're going to connect the rest of the world. And I think that this is a message that the internet society has to continue pushing forward. So this is a really critical thing. But I think we've had a lot of success on this this year, and I think the numbers show it. As you can see, there's a large number of accomplishments there. Just a couple of things that I want to point out that, you know, we've got partners like U N S gap and C tel and other kinds of people that you don't normally find on the, you know, biggest promoters of internet technology. They're they're on board. So we really are collaborating effectively with with people around this. The other thing is that we've also seen community groups themselves who have become very you know, really pushing hard on this on my way to this meeting. For instance, I stopped at at the Indigenous Connectivity Summit in in Hilo. But I, of course, am not useful to do any of this kind of work anymore. The entire team was there pushing this. We've got a number of networks that have been built this way this year. Next slide, please. We also continued to work on I X Ps. The I X P stuff that was in the internet exchange points, the I X P stuff that was in the action plan last year was particularly written around Africa, but we had this additional goal that we were kind of aiming at a number of I X Ps that we were going to support in the rest of the of the globe as well. We didn't make quite as big a dent here as we wanted. We already had a baseline of like fifteen that we were supporting. We were aiming for ten. We didn't quite get there. We but we did get, you know, some pretty good progress with eight. We've got a couple more that we're working on. It might still land before the end of the year, so we might make this number, but it's it's not quite all the way there yet. A big piece of this has to do not so much with just getting internet exchange points up, but also in making sure that they're stable, that they're it's possible for their businesses to continue and so on. Because a lot of the time what happens is people get these things started and and then they reach a sort of critical point. And and I mean, as as the internet society knows, because we are going through one of these transitions ourselves. You know, there's a critical point in a lot of organizations' lives where there are these inflection points where you need actually to change your policies. You need to change the ways you are working and so on. In the case of I X Ps, a lot of the problem is frequently that, you know, it starts with somebody who's really dedicated and so on. And, you know, they're working really hard and then they're working eight hours a day, and then they're working twelve hours a day, and pretty soon they're working thirty six hours a day, and that isn't going to scale. So we need instead to, you know, take those those kinds of operations to the next step. And that's a big part of what this is, making sure that communities who've got this support, they've got, you know, green shoots. We got to make sure that those shoots spread and turn into, you know, a real, a real garden. So that's what a lot of this is about. Again, I'm not going to go through all of the detail on here because I think you can all read. But I but I want to I want to emphasize that this is a an area where we continue to work. Next slide, please. So this is the 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 one where we were working on in Africa. So the goal was that we were aiming at a number of I X Ps to be developed in Africa. We had scaling the operations of at least ten I X Ps in Africa. Then we had a baseline of five. We certainly got ten working this year. We've worked with ten of them. We also had the tenth African pairing and interconnection forum. It was a significant anniversary and one that I'm very pleased to say is is growing on its own. So so the community has taken over the secretariat function of that. And this is a another really significant move, right? That what you do, you foster a community, you get it growing, you get it working on its own. And then the community takes over and it runs things for itself. And I think that's a critical thing that we have to do. We have to make sure that we don't become critical supports for things, but rather we become the the seed around which things can grow. You know, kind of like the grain of sand in the oyster, like what, you know, you want the pearl to come out of that. You don't want it to just remain a grain of sand. And so so that's the that's the thing that I think we have managed to do in those cases, and I think we're going to continue to work on that. Of course, a number of of the number of or the amount of traffic, I guess I should say, that we were aiming at to keep inside of Africa would require better measurement. And this was one of the things we uncovered that would require better measurement of what the traffic patterns actually are. And it turned out that we had a serious baseline problem here where we really did not have a solid understanding of what it was that we were starting from. And it becomes very difficult then to say, well, we're going to make sure that it it has this change when you don't know what you're starting from. So this has, in fact, been identified as one of the things that we need to work on, and you'll see in our presentation tomorrow that that measuring things is going to become a much a much higher priority for next year. We do have, of course, a number of other upcoming milestones in in this quarter. In in particular, we're trying to do work on cash flow. So so this is part of the work towards that, towards keeping traffic in the continent. And just I I think everybody knows this, but I'll just mention it. This really is part of the goal here, right? That keeping traffic local is is a really significant goal for a lot of these networks because the the alternative is a very expensive operation. And so these things go together, making the caches local and so on, goes together with with the operation of of the I X Ps because then you keep the traffic flowing locally and you don't have it spanning the world. At the same time, and alongside this, we also try to foster, you know, development of local content itself. Because if all that's happening is we're building a pipeline by which traffic that is produced in one part of the world can be cached locally in another part of the world. We're not actually fostering the local economy as well. So both of these things go hand in hand. There, you know, there are pieces of what it is that we're trying to do. The goal of this, at the at the very end of it, is the same one we share all the time. The internet is for everyone, and that means it should be for these people too. Next slide. Technical security is another issue that has has plagued us for a number of years. Obviously, the central focus for us in this particular case has to do with routing security. Now, routing incidents continue to be an issue on the internet. Some of those routing incidents appear now to be malicious in a way that perhaps in the past they were simply mistakes. But there's still plenty of mistakes on the internet, right? I mean, we get lots and lots of of stories about, you know, various malicious routing attacks, but the overwhelming number of these things are just bonehead mistakes. And that's an important thing to keep in mind because that's one of the things that that the manners project is there to do. Good routing security means not only routing security against attacks, but also routing a security against mistakes. Because from the point of view of the internet, there's no difference between these two things. You can't tell. So what we had last year was a significant aim to double the number of manners members. Now, it looks like we didn't quite double the number of manners members because we had a seventy six percent increase from from the year end of twenty eighteen until now. However, we actually vastly exceeded our target. So when we were assuming, when we wrote the 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 plan for you in in Q four last year, we were aiming for a hundred members by the end of the year, and it turned out we had a hundred forty six by the end of twenty eighteen. So so the sort of two year thing, it turns out now we've got two hundred and fifty seven members, and I think that we're, you know, in in pretty good shape here. The the other question, though, is, okay, so what? People are signed up for manners. Whoop de doo, right? The the whoop de doo is, is something changing as a result of this? And therefore, the critical thing that we needed to release this year is the thing that happened, and that's the observatory. If you can't tell whether you're making any difference in a thing, then you can have all the members you want, and it makes no difference. But what the observatory does is it gives us the ability to look at the internet and see whether routing leaks are getting better. And that's, you know, that's something that we have lacked for a long time. The internet now has that, and this is the way that we we have delivered it. What we had approximately at the end of twenty eighteen was two thousand and fifty one routing incidents. We observed in the observatory one thousand eight hundred and fifteen routing incidents up to our in September twenty nineteen. So we've got, you know, we've got this correlation problem here because the the tools have changed. So this is really a baseline year. It's it's time right now by which we'll we'll start to build up of these numbers, and then year on year, we can see whether this whether this is being effective. The goal of the manners campaign, it's not, it's not really just an internet society campaign because once again, what we're trying to do here is develop a community that's going to look after this. This problem can only be solved by people who are routing packets. They're the only people in the whole world who can solve this problem. And what we need to do is create the conditions under which they believe that it's in their interest. Because we've had B C P thirty eight for like a hundred million years. Okay, not really, but a long time. And 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 it it wasn't widely deployed. And the reason it wasn't is because I had to pay the cost and everybody else got the benefit. The goal of this project fundamentally is to change that equation, to make it in your interests to improve the security of your network and to improve the security of your neighbor's network. And and what this does is it provides fundamentally a mechanism by which people can build reputation systems around whether you're a good a good routing network, right? If you do the right things, then you don't appear in this observatory very often. Or you you appear as somebody who's just routing traffic correctly is the better way to put it. And then what happens is people think, okay, well, now that's a network that I want to use because my traffic is not going to be negatively affected. It's not going to be negatively affected because my provider has messed up. It's not going to be negatively affected because some government has told this provider to change the to change the settings. And therefore, I want to use them as the provider as opposed to this other one that seems to have all these mistakes. You know, if I'm a if an I if I'm a a network provider of some kind, all of my customers are affected by my my mistakes. So we got to give people the information for them to be able to say, ah, here are the people who really know what they're doing. That's the goal of this of this project. Again, I'm not going to, you know, go through all of the detailed bullet points here, but I do encourage you to have a look at them. The team has done an enormous amount of work on this project, and sometimes this project comes in for dismissal because it doesn't look like it's doing a lot of things. One of the problems with this project is that it's intended to reduce the number of things you can see. So it's actually supposed to make itself invisible, right? And and the and the more successful it is, the less you can notice it, which makes it seem like a negative project. But in fact, the less you hear about it, the better the story. And that's a that's an important fact of this. And I know sometimes that I think the team doesn't feel like they get all of the attention that they they deserve. And I'm here to tell them that it's okay. That's actually kind of the goal. So A plus. Yes, right, exactly. Next, please. Now, we also wanted to continue our work on building trust. And you will remember that we had a number of of efforts around the Internet of Things over the past several years. And some of those things have been have been actually quite quite successful. This goal was to increase the number of manufacturers and increase the number of penetration into the into the consumer market to get them to adopt a variation of the O T A framework for the Internet of Things security. That was that was the goal. We had a list of target manufacturers and we went to work on them. Well, we didn't have a lot of success. We were stuck pretty stubbornly with just a couple of signups, and we we had a number of other people who said, well, if somebody else goes first, then we'll come along too. And we worked on that for quite a bit of time. The team did a lot of work on it, and they and they really did make a lot of effort. But we were not able to move the needle. Some other people working in the Internet of Things space seemed to be having more luck. In particular, our partners at Mozilla were doing quite a lot of good work. And we had a very, very effective collaboration with Consumers International around the around the demand side of this. So our conclusion, when we were looking at planning for this year, was that this was a thing that that, you know, the the other goals we had, we had actually done pretty good work on, and I'm going to come to those in a moment. And this particular goal of moving these manufacturers was unlikely to be something that we were going to have a lot of luck with. We didn't have the connections with with the manufacturers. We were not really building them very effectively, and we weren't getting the signups that we wanted. And when that happens, sometimes what you have to say is, well, we don't like, we think we still think this is important. We still think it's valuable, and we're pleased that other people are working in this space. But it doesn't help to have us like working in parallel and ineffectually. So we have wound this program down. I it it was a very difficult decision, I have to say. You know, this was something that many of us were attached to. The Internet of Things is obviously an important development, and it's going to affect all of us. You know, essentially forever into the future. But we have, you know, a fixed sort of pool of resources. And you have to sometimes decide that somebody else is leading that charge. You should let them do it and and put your shoulder behind them instead of trying to lead yourself. So that's what we did. However, I will point out that we had quite a lot of other successes that were important, and I think we're part of the reason that our our various partners and and allies working in this field had had some of the success that that they did. Because we have been very good at fostering communities, the the discussion that we've talked about, you know, in some of these other areas is one of the things that we were doing in here. So you will remember that we had the Canadian multi stakeholder effort on I O T. We had another one in Senegal. There was a French group that was working with us and so on. And these things actually have taken off. They have this, they have, they have built communities themselves. They're working in this pattern and they're and they're, you know, they're building off one another, and they're collaborating around the world. So they're talking to one another. We're continuing to to invest some people, time and some effort in keeping in keeping that 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 wheel turning. But really, the momentum is now on the part of the community based efforts. They're having success on their own. And and I think what we should do is celebrate that success and say, hey, all these people are doing this thing. They don't need us to be standing there, you know, providing input when they're when they're running on their own. So that, I think, is a very important success, and it's one of the things that we, as the internet society, need to learn to build on. We had success in this area. We were not having direct lobbying success with the manufacturers, but we were having good success at fostering the communities. We did that. The communities are up and running now. They know how to do it. We can get out of the way and and turn our attention to other urgent problems that are facing the internet. So that's what we are. That's what we're working on here. Again, I'm not going to go through all the the details in the bullets, but I think that despite the fact that this project was wound down because of the the one sort of quantitative number or quantitative measure that was not really working for us, I actually think that this was a real success, and I think we should book it that way. Next, please. Now, this fostering a collaborative approach was tightly linked, in fact, to those efforts that I was just talking about. What we saw was that we had a number of targets. We had we had targets that we were trying to trying to get these governments to involve themselves in in collaborative approach. And we did have a number of of significant successes here. In particular, we had the African Union Cybersecurity Expert Group that was put together. And that's a multi stakeholder group in a region that is not well known for its sort of wide consultative collaboration. So I think that, you know, we should regard that as a like a really big success. Similarly, we we had all of these I O T stakeholder platforms that I just mentioned. That was another area where governments and and once again, you know, I guess maybe because I've been exposed to it so much, I over the last year, I I'm I no longer find it so remarkable. But it was kind of weird to see people, you know, from the middle of of the civil service, walking into a room and getting up at the microphone and saying, well, I don't know whether we could support this. I think my minister is a little exposed on this thing, but on the other hand, this is the right thing to do so we can try. That is not a thing that people in civil service get up and say, right? And there they were, webcast, like live streaming on the internet, saying those things out loud. And and they had somehow managed to convince their their countries that being involved in public like that is a better way to develop the rules around these kinds of devices. That is, that's an astonishing move, and we're not alone in doing this, right? This is a This is a a thing that is is proving itself out across many different communities. And I think the governments are sometimes a little bit late coming to it. But they recognize the value of this, and this is one of the things that we're doing. So I think that that's great. We also saw something that was, and you will have heard about this, was somewhat a little more controversial because it was not an open multi-stakeholder process initially. So network neutrality already is a difficult topic because it means like different things depending on where you are. But in the United States, it means one thing, and it has been a longstanding, serious problem. And getting anybody to talk to each other even reasonably has been a longstanding problem. And for reasons, I I can only, you know, be thankful to Providence that we have managed to find some of the staff that we have. They have the ability to convince people to sit down and talk. And so that's what this effort was in the United States. Now, you know, it's not a home run. We're not all the way home yet. But but these are players who have not, you know, they've all been suing one another for 25 years. And and instead, they were talking. And that is the kind of thing that, you know, the the Internet depends upon. It depends upon people collaborating in order to try to get things, get things to work. Whether this will persist, I don't know. There were, there were criticisms of the approach that we took in that case because we had to do it with, you know, the the players, like all the people who were involved in suing one another. And so we needed to, we needed to pay some attention to to that, to that distinction, that that was a case where we needed to get people to collaborate first in private before you could have the discussion in public. And there were people who criticized this approach because they said that this is the wrong idea. This is not true multi-stakeholder thing because everybody wasn't involved. Well, if you can't get any of the people who are who are literally in control of the network to talk to one another, getting everybody else to talk about it is not going to help, right? Because none of the people who actually can make a difference are involved in that discussion. So that's the reason we took that strategy, and I think that this is an important lesson for us, that sometimes the right thing to do is to get the people together in order that you can get started. That doesn't mean that you're finished. It's the, the idea is to get things started so that you can then move on to a way that includes everybody in the discussion. And and that means that we need to be flexible. There's not a simple rule about the right way to do these things. There, there is a difficulty about this project, and that was that our quantitative measures depended on a baseline. We needed to see whether we were going to increase the number of governments, and it turned out that we had poor counting. So this is a another lesson for the Internet Society and for the staff that we really need to identify solid baselines in our in our KPIs when we're going to announce them. Because if we don't have good solid baselines, then the, you know, the subsequent data is kind of garbage. And and that's been, you know, a useful lesson for the Internet Society staff. I think that, you know, we haven't historically always been so great about reporting on our progress, and some of these measures are not going to work the first time. I think that that's great, and I think that the staff deserve a lot of commendation for for working so hard this year in order to learn some of these lessons, which I think in some cases were not very fun to learn. Next, please. In in building our community, the the area where we were focusing this year was on the chapters. And you heard the chapter AC's view about this a little bit earlier that, you know, many of the things that we have done have not been perfect, but and and I fully concede that. But I have to say that I think actually our relationships with the chapters are getting better. And I think they're getting better partly because we have some clear rules. We have a clear understanding of what the interface is, what things are, what it means to be an Internet Society chapter and what it does not. So one of the big things that we had to do, and this has been a multi-year effort that was started before I I came to the Internet Society on staff. But and so you will be aware of it, was this effort to to rank the health of the chapters, to increase the engagement and to make sure that the chapters had a basis by which they could tell what their health was, what, you know, what was the relationship. So the first piece of that was to get everybody signed up on on chapter engagement letters so that, you know, you knew whether you were a chapter or didn't, which was historically a problem. We didn't always have clear criteria about what it was to be a chapter. Our criteria are pretty loose, but they're clear. And and that clarity is a really important part of how you have a a grown-up relationship with other organizations. Because, as we all know, the chapters are not really part of us in the corporate sense. They're independent organizations, and we're all associated with one another through this common mission and common vision of the Internet. But what that means is that we need, in fact, to 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 make sure that that relationship is healthy and that it's clear. And so that's what we did. We have, by now, we have 123 chapters in good standing. This was not true, you know, just a little bit before. So things have have really been improving over the course of the year. There are eight chapters that remain in rejuvenation as of when this was prepared. I don't know if it's moved in the last, you know, little bit, but I think it's the same. Oh, you're looking at the map, are you? Yeah. So this is available on the map, and and that's updated from MemberNova and so on. The the critical thing here is that we've got a bunch of of effectiveness measures, and I think that that's a really important part. Now, there remains some some difficulties in this relationship, and I don't want to, I don't want to downplay it. There remains the problem that we need the chapters to have certain financial capabilities. In particular, we need them to have a bank account in their own name in order to get money from us. And I am painfully aware of how that is causing us trouble. It's causing us trouble with the chapters. It's causing it causing difficulty for the chapter operations. It it would cause us difficulty in the other direction, that is, with the IRS if we were not careful about this. And so we're continuing to look at ways to do that. Sarah's going to come tomorrow and talk a little bit about the foundation. And one of the things that the foundation is leading is the way that, you know, maybe we can try to solve some of those problems. Because there are workarounds for some, but not all of these cases. And and we're looking at various various ways that we might be able to solve this. There is, you will see there, there's a little asterisk that says, well, you probably won't see because it's in tiny little type. But there, there is a region-by-region view available in the grow dashboard, and we'll be talking about the dashboard in a few minutes. We've, we've got a lot of activity in this area, and I have to say the other thing that we've done this year, you know, in an effort to engage with the chapters, has been a lot of consultation around the development of the of the organization's own plans, the things that the Internet Society is trying to do globally. So that's another area where I believe we have had actually quite a lot of success, quite a lot of success. There has been a little bit of adjustment in the way that this relationship works because some of the programs have moved out of the Internet Society itself and into the Internet Society Foundation. And so, for instance, Beyond the Net, which was originally and it remains a chapter-focused program, has nevertheless stopped being an Internet Society activity as such, and instead has been clearly marked as a funding program that goes to the foundation. And so that that shows off the continued collaboration between the Internet Society and the Internet Society Foundation. And it also makes sure that the chapters continue, continue their funding. We'll be sorting out more of that kind of stuff, you know, over time and so on. Next, please. There's been a lot of work on strengthening our voice this year. A particular goal here was to increase page views and to make sure that 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 page view count was was rising because that's a, you know, a reasonably good indication of whether people are coming to us or not. The target was 3 million page views. Until September 30th, we were at 2.59, but as of the 4th of November, we have in fact crossed the 3, 3 million. So congratulations to the comm team, who I guess were watching this constantly. So like little ticker. There were also a number of of efforts around other kinds of communications things. So, for instance, the ISOC Foundation site was built up this year. And that was a, you know, a parallel track, but it was all actually performed by the Internet Society Communications Staff. There's, there's been quite a a lot of effort around audits and so on. And of course, we've had some some other other migrations of the various website pieces. Next, please. We also had a lot of work around brand health, however. And this is an area where it turns out we suffered a little bit, once again, from from the baseline position we were starting from. So what we wanted to do was was increase the brand health by 3%. Well, that turns out to be a little bit tricky to measure because it it appears that the assessment was not perfect, but it was pretty good. The measurement that we started with was a little bit confusing, and it turned out that it was hard to measure improvements in it and so on. And gradually, what we concluded over the course of the year was that this was a poor measure of whether people perceived us well. And so there's been a lot of effort among the staff to, you know, to to redirect the way that we the way that we understand what the health of the Internet Society brand is. All of that said, there were a bunch of things that that were done this year. And and I think you have all seen the the new brand video of the Internet Society, right? Because we we did a shot of that at the last, at the last meeting. We also got some some really good attention, and I think that this is a really important part. We got a lot of really good attention that came from the things that we were doing. So the Internet Hall of Fame, we got a lot of great press from that. There were various op-eds by various people on the staff that that attracted a lot of attention. And the Manners Observatory launch attracted quite a lot of attention as well. That's a critical thing to to remember, right? That this is not a thing in itself. It's a thing that's really in service of all of the good work that we're doing. And that's one of the most important parts of this. Again, I won't go through all of the detail on there, but please do look in your in your slides. Next, please. We continue to have actually, communications is one of the areas that is is actually best at measuring itself among the staff. And so you get more more metrics here because we have them. But but one of the important things to see here is that we've got a a really significant increase in engagement. Now, engagement is is measured by people continuing to to interact with the stuff that you're doing, right? So when you've got people interacting with your accounts on various social media environments, or when you've got people who continue to use the site and so on, that engagement numbers is way up. What that suggests, of course, is that we're producing things that people are more interested in. That's really the measure. So it's not so much a communications thing as it tells you, oh, is the content any good? And the and the answer here is yes, it's in fact keeping people sticking around. Similarly, we have what's what's called Burned Media. I love this name. That that's the stuff that you didn't have to ask other people to do for you, but instead they came to you. And I think that's, you know, that's also showing, that's also showing a lot of really positive indicators. Next, please. So there were some things that we that we were planning to do, and and they were intending to to lead into into future things. And we did this, but we didn't get, we didn't, we didn't get the follow-on work. So this is the, this is the big one. We had a bunch of fellowship programs, and you remember hearing about this, where we were spending a significant amount of money, but we didn't really have a clear idea of what it was that they were supposed to achieve. And it wasn't clear, when we did know what it what it was supposed to achieve, that that was the thing that we wanted to achieve with them. So so we have both of those problems. And that suggested that really what we needed to do was a a pretty wholesale rethink of of these things. And so we actually turned down some programs that that were running. Like, for instance, the the technical fellowships to the IETF. We stopped bringing people on technical fellowships to IETF meetings because it wasn't clear that what that was doing was in fact engendering the kind of the kind of talent that we wanted. So we we started to, we started to to have a hard look at that, and we turned down a whole bunch of programs. This uncovered an enormous number of surprises, I will say. We found, I think Sally, I'm sorry, she was drinking right when I said that. Sally kind of led this effort. And and she, there, there was, there, there, there was a moment, I could tell at one point when when I was talking to Sally. And and we were discussing an issue, and and it was obvious to me that what had happened was she turned over a rock, and under the rocks were more rocks. Like, it was just rocks all the way down, and under each rock was more rock piles. And and I think that that the team that did this, led by Sally, really did a fabulous job. They developed a a really big and beautiful holistic picture of what we should do with these with these fellowships. In particular, there's been a very significant effort to understand what it is that we would want to achieve with these things. And there are, there are two very clear aims. One having to do with people early in their career, and another one having to do with people in the middle of their careers. And these are different sorts of goals. And what we're really trying to do in the design of these programs, what we would try to do is to figure out how we could make more people in the world who believe the Internet is for everyone and who believe in the Internet model of how you build it. That's what we're trying to, trying to do. We want to convert hearts and minds. That's essentially what that fellowship is is about. And we think that you can do that by just explaining to people how stuff works because we really do believe that the Internet way is the best way. The problem is that we're doing a lot of other stuff. And so the difficulty is that we planned to, you know, take this out to the community this year and say, okay, well, here's our proposal, and we would have, you know, some consultations, tweak the program designs based on that, and then we would launch it, you know, in 2020. That would be the plan. The the unfortunate fact is that when we looked at all of the other stuff that we're trying to do, and we looked at the pile of money we had and the amount of time we had and the commitments that we were trying to make, we found that we probably can't do it this year. Now, we may revise that decision later in the year as we start to exercise the plan. I'll be talking about the plan, of course, tomorrow. But I want you to appreciate that, you know, we did all of this work. This is sitting and ready to go, but we're probably not going to move on it right away. And I'm bitterly disappointed that that's the decision we had to make. But, you know, what you pay me for is to make choices, and I made that choice.
Maybe to to, I mean, just so that everybody notices what what Andrew is saying. So you remember that the the last board, you know, we always send, you know, some some action points to the next board. And and this was one of them, actually. So just just for you to know that this is why it's important that Andrew is following up on that because this was an explicit decision for the 2000, whatever you call the previous board to this board. So so that's why I I was also talking to Sally and Andrew so that they gave a status update, just so that, you know, everybody understands what we are talking about.
Thank you. Next, please. Well, actually, two next, please. So I gave you a little teaser about this in in Montreal, but this is the first time that we're sort of showing it off publicly. You should have received over the last couple of days logins to this tool. And this tool is intended to provide you with ongoing indications about the work that the Internet Society staff is doing. So the goal here is to produce a tool by which you can measure against the goals that we set for ourselves. In the in the plan for for next year, we have a number of indicators. And the goal and the idea here is that you've got those indicators at your fingertips every time. Every time you talk to me, you can have logged into that thing and look at it first. And then you can yell at me for ways in which we are not doing it. And you can praise the staff for all of the ways in which they are achieving the things that they're doing. So that's, that's really the goal here. There are a number of pieces to this, to this dashboard. You can see in the dashboard right now indicators having to do, and and so these are all static pages. You all have logins to this thing, and I'm not brave enough to try to do a live demo. So so I encourage you instead to use your your real version. But as you can see, we have a number of of indicators here. This slide shows the Connect the World measures. It includes, for instance, the number of agencies and so on. So the one that we mentioned before, the target was two, the current number is two, so it's 100%. In this particular case, there was the number of IXP's. This snapshot was taken before, so it's only three of 10. But as I mentioned to you before, we've actually exceeded that by something. And and you can see also a sort of rate of change graph, you know, down at the bottom to try to capture what, you know, what's going on in the Manners Project and so on. So these are, the the central idea here is that these are measures of the impact indicators we said we were going to try to meet. And you can look at them all the time and know, hey, what is, to what extent are we meeting, meeting our targets? Next, please. We also are trying to measure, you know, the the pieces about our community. One of the things about, and again, this is a static view, but you have the the live one. The the chapters and SIGs there, you can see that there are are two colors, the one- and SIGs there, you can see that there are two colors, the ones that are in good standing and the ones that are in rejuvenation. And it's broken down by region. I was talking to Tom Stark, who did a lot of the work on this the other day, and he was showing me the system, and he was complaining about how he couldn't group things here in a way that was convenient for him. But it turns out, of course, that we're structuring things a little bit differently at the Internet Society this year, and there's very effective collaboration going on across the staff in order to address this, because people have figured out, hey, this is just, you know, structured query language underneath it, and it turns out it's not that difficult to adjust things. So that's one of the things that I'm pleased to see, because what we're going to be able to do is iterate relatively quickly on this. This tool is very far from perfect, but it's very far from nothing as well. And I think that that's, you know, one of the reasons that I'm pleased that we've done it. This is, and I want to emphasize as well that a lot of what is going on here is the fruit of having set up a department whose job it is really to look at the organization and see how well it's working and so on. Renalia leads that group of people, and there's a whole staff there that are supporting that effort. And that will continue in the next year. But I think we've got a good start here on understanding what things that we're doing that are effective and useful for our community, and what things are, you know, not really working out. And then we should stop doing those things and use our precious resources to make the Internet better. Next, please. Oh, that's the end of it.
Thank you, Andrew. So just, I mean, a few questions, like as Andrew mentioned, and Richard mentioned that this morning as well, and I have mentioned it many times. I mean, one of the main things we asked Andrew to do when, you know, we hire him, was to basically look into meaningful KPIs to measure impact as opposed to activity. So I think this is a giant leap in the right direction. The previous action point or action plan was actually, you know, a step in the right direction, but, you know, we put it together when Andrew was just kind of landing. And, I mean, it wasn't perfect, but this one, actually, I mean, it has been advancing in that direction. And as you see, I mean, like, having the dashboard, and actually acknowledging when we were measuring something without that baseline, or without even a coherent way to measure, which doesn't make any sense, I think is good, so that, you know, those fixes are very welcome. So just, you know, to say that, you know, really, I mean, thanks for that, and to basically get the spirit of the guidelines we were getting from the board, we were given from the board. So thanks a lot for that. The second one is regarding the, you mentioned network neutrality, and I think I already asked you and Sally, but also to, so that everybody is on the same page. As you know, nowadays, network neutrality is called open internet in Europe. And, well, I mean, it's not exactly the same thing, but basically, it's what, you know, it would be the equivalent. And as you know, there's an open consultation right now. So just maybe you want to say a few words of our engagement in that, or whether we think it's important or not?
So the central issue around these topics is that the first problem is to get people to understand what it is they're talking about. And I think that one of the central things that we've been trying to do in our engagement in Europe is to deal with the policymakers, to show them that some of the questions that they're asking are not always the questions that they need to be asking. And I think if we can lead the conversation in that direction, then, you know, we're going to have, we're going to have some effect. Obviously, you know, we have staff on the ground in Europe, and they're engaged with people there. You know, so-called network neutrality was not a major priority this year, because it seemed like it had gone quiescent, now it seems to be heating back up. And obviously, the reason we have people in all of the regions is precisely so that we can keep on top of those things. So I'm, you know, I'm confident that the regional bureau, what, you know, is transforming in the next iteration of the organization, but it's not going away, will continue to provide that. And the nice thing is, this effort, you know, matches nicely with a number of the efforts that we're tackling in this year anyway. So it fits very naturally into the priorities of the organization. And I think that that, you know, that gives us the opportunity to sort of participate in those discussions in a way that says, you know, what you're trying to do here, we understand it, but you need not to do that in the sort of isolated way that appears to be the starting point of that conversation. The good news about, you know, large regulatory moves is that they take quite a bit of time, and so you have the opportunity to try to nudge things in the right direction.
Okay, good. But yeah, just for completeness, I think it's good when we talk about, you know, a certain issue in a certain region, just to understand, you know, the open issues. And I agree, I mean, the issues there, they are very different to what they are discussing in the US, actually. Okay, and my last comment was that, yeah, I mean, like, I think we have discussed this many times, but again, for completeness, we completely understand that, you know, the more flexible you are when it comes to giving money, it's, you know, better in general. But there's certain red lines that we have said that we're not going to cross. And one of them is not only the IRS, but it's kind of like legally, there's certain things that we cannot do. So, you know, within kind of the legal framework and the tax framework, we will do everything to be flexible, not only to chapters, but to, you know, people receiving grants from the foundation. But, you know, our compliance program basically has some red lines that, you know, it's like, there we have a zero tolerance policy, so we will never cross them. So just to be clear, what is the position of the board on that? And this is one of the most important things we have, I mean, to be, yeah, exactly. Yeah, that's a good summary.
Going to jail does not typically advance the mission.
Exactly. Well, it depends.
So to be clear, I believe that every person on the Internet Society staff knows this. And, you know, in the event that we were to discover that somebody did not and was acting consistently with that, we would move swiftly to do something about it, because it is very, very important to me that we have very consistent and professional lines around which we're doing these things. And it's not just because, you know, going to jail doesn't advance the mission. It also makes you, it also makes you leaky, right? What it does is it means that you don't use those resources in the most effective way possible. We're generously well-funded for an operation of our size. We're incredibly fortunate that we've got a relatively stable annual, you know, up and down amount that comes in. And the benefit of that is that we can deliver some of these things to the Internet community. But if we don't use those things effectively, then we're wasting that money. And despite the fact that it looks like, I think, to a lot of people, like, a lot of money, the truth of the matter is that this is not a huge, you know, fortune, right? I mean, it's well under 100 million a year, which in a lot of countries is, you know, not like even the size of like a minor department. And I think that that's an important thing, when you think of very large economies, that this is not a huge amount of money that we have to spend on this thing. We're very fortunate that we also have a community that, you know, we can use to magnify our goals and our activities. And what that means is we can leverage that. But if we're going to leverage it, then we need to make sure that, in fact, we're, you know, we're assisting the people who are most effective with it. And the way we do that is to measure those things. I think it makes for effective partnership as well. So that, to me, is, I mean, I guess it goes without saying, but it's better to say it. So, thank you.
Yeah, no, I understand that many people are on the same page, but just in case someone is not, I don't care, you know, sounding like a broken record every now and then, especially on important matters. Any questions, comments on last year's action plans? So I have Hans Peter and Walid.
Sean?
Minor question. So I love the grow thing, that is super cool. Is there a plan? Because I know it's just kind of just started. There's to add more data, so when you see like 15 governments, you can like click on it, it'll say, here's the 15 governments.
Yeah, so some of the limitations come from the way the thing was designed. So there are a bunch of, okay, now I'm going to geek out a little bit, because I'm a database guy from way back, right? And so like, I really want to, and it's very, very hard for me to leave it alone. But one of the limitations is that it turns out there are certain kinds of grouping queries that make it difficult to drill further. And that's one of the areas where we want to spend a little bit of time working on it. If you have comments on things that you, you know, see that don't work for you as well as you might like, or, you know, you'd like to be able to drill in this direction as opposed to that one, it's very helpful to have that feedback, because then we can prioritize those things, you know, according to what it is that people are wanting to do.
Thanks, Hans Peter and Walid.
Yeah, perhaps it's also sounding like a broken record, but I'm coming up with this over and over. I'm absolutely okay, and I think it's great what we've heard so far. And hearing about shutting down things which makes no sense is absolutely the right way to do, in my opinion and from my view. But there might be a perception, especially from the outside, who is a little bit different. For example, when the IoT program was more or less shut down, messages reached me, oh, does ISOC doesn't think IoT is something important for future, blah, 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 blah. Same is true for ambassador or fellowship programs. Why are you shutting it down? I believe it needs a little bit more messaging or a little bit more explanation why it's done, or especially for, in the case of the fellowship program, that it's a delay, that we do something in this area again, but something different, because what we did so far was not the best we could do, and we want to do better. So just some perception from the outside, not the content.
I really, I understand what you're saying, and I think there are two things that I would respond with. First of all, yes, we can always get better at communicating these things, and that's an area where I think we need to improve some. But the other thing, and some of this will come up more clearly tomorrow, you know, the goal of developing our annual plan and developing our annual plan with these metrics and so on, and the goal of developing our plan with a picture about what, you know, the five-year vision is, is partly to make those things much less surprising. So for instance, in the case of the IoT effort, in one sense, it was conceived as a multi-year effort, but there was never a sort of arc about how the multiple years were going to fit together and so on. So then it becomes impossible to turn it down without just sort of, you know, saying, yep, sorry, we're turning that off now. And instead, what we need to be able to do is to say to the community, hey, look at this, this is what the situation is, and then people can see, you know, how that is. I have to, I said to the staff the other day, that, you know, one of the things I asked them to do this year was essentially do two years' work in one year, because we had to develop all of this stuff, and we also had to, you know, make the whole organization able to measure out into the future and so on. And they worked really, really hard to deliver on that. It did mean that some of the time we ended up with gaps in the way that this was communicated, and I understand that. And I know that probably each of you faced within your communities, various pushbacks from people who were like, you know, how come you don't care about us anymore? And I regret that that is the message that ended up getting communicated, because it certainly isn't true. But it's also true that I want this organization to be able to deliver things in a predictable and orderly way, so that people understand, hey, that program, even though it's a good idea, is something that we're not doing very well, and these other people are doing it well, we should be able to hand it off to them. And I agree with you, that message was not fully carried forward.
Thank you, Sean, Walid, and John.
Yeah, first of all, great work so far, and truly hopeful on the future. I wanted to reflect on the Middle East, and there were a few shining points there in the Middle East, from Saudi Arabia, et cetera. Have you learned through these experiences that there are new ways dealing with certain countries? And how can we leverage that future?
So you're exactly right, that in a very challenging region, and in fact, a very challenging staff situation, we've had enormous successes in the Middle East region, and it really goes down to the people who are there, who did a fabulous job working together with partners, working with governments in the region, and drawing on the rest of the organization. I think that partly because the staff situation was understaffed the entire, and it still remains understaffed, they were very creative at figuring out, oh, who is coming and how can I get them in and so on, and had a story for how it was going to fit together. Some of the other regions, they, you know, they built up over time, whereas this is a new region, and so they were a little bit short-staffed. And there was a little bit less of a sort of regional focus by the staff, they instead focused across the organization, because that was where the resources were. Now, this is actually a lesson that I think the other bureaus very rapidly latched on to, and so we've seen a lot of very effective use of that. And the organizational changes that we'll be talking about tomorrow, but that you've heard about already, are a reflection of that. They're an effort, in fact, to make sure that we are very effective at delivering a sort of, you know, Internet Society view, but doing it where we are and so on. It reminds us also that effective and close relationships with governments, even if we don't exactly agree with the program that they have, are important. We need to make sure that we don't let those relationships founder or corrode. It's an important part of it. You know, and we need to do that without falling into the mistake of thinking that governments are the people who are going to lead the development of the Internet anywhere, because they're not. Most networks are not run by governments, and the way the Internet works is by the networks connecting to one another. And having that conversation pretty consistently has been effective. Another thing that we have learned, I think, really nicely in that region, is that there are occasions where it's tempting to set up a dynamic of, oh, here is this technology from this part of the world, and it's being, you know, brought in into here. And instead, you need to convert that conversation into, here is a technology that you can use to develop things in this way, according to your priorities. And rather than setting up a dynamic of, you know, here are the values that are embedded in here, instead, putting to people that the value of the Internet is really that it's your network, and you connect and gain the advantages locally. Concentrating on those features of the way the Internet delivers the value to the network operator is something that we've found has been successful. We've had good results with people who otherwise are sometimes a little bit hard to persuade that this is a technology that is advantageous to them. So I think that those are things that have been quite valuable. We also have some people here who visited the region, but who otherwise are not always there. And I think that it would be, you know, useful to have some discussions about, you know, things that people learn that way and so on. I don't want to put Sally on the spot, though. Sure.
Yes, so I, Narmine tapped me too, and Jane as well. She's tapped pretty much anyone she can tap to get to the region, to Saudi Arabia in April. And that was not, certainly not a country I had ever visited or thought I would visit, and never thought that the Internet Society would be frankly welcome. And we were more than welcomed. The minister sat with us, co-chaired the workshop with us, representatives from Oman and Bahrain and Egypt around the table, really engaging and offering ideas and interested in what we had to say. And what was nice about what I think what the region and Narmine has done is, that was tied to the people from the government that she brought to the Policy Fellowship several weeks earlier. So they had already come home, briefed their minister on, this is working, these people will talk to us, senior people from this community will sit down and engage with us. So by the time the workshop happened, those doors were wide open. And it's continued now throughout, in a number of other places in the region. We're getting ready to publish a report. And, you know, this is all in a matter of months, but the doors really are open in ways that we never would have imagined. So it was definitely a learning experience for me. And Andrew told me, I really must do this, and Narmine told me, I really must do this, and it was extraordinary. It was not something I would have thought we would have managed to do. And I think it will bear fruit for many years, I think.
Thank you. Anything else, Walid? Okay, good. John, you can be concise, that'd be perfect.
I have sort of a simple, mighty question.
I have sort of a simple, my big question, which is, I am impressed that we got three million page views. Were there any surprises as to what pages people were viewing?
There, there have been some, some slightly puzzling pieces of the data. You know, there are things that, that definitely drive page views, right? The Internet Hall of Fame this year drove a lot of page views. I mean, you know, just sort of events tend to drive things. There, there's a cluster of stuff that is, is old content that is still, that is, you know, still on this, on the site because we're the internet society, we try not to like just randomly take things down. And, and it continues to be popular and it suggests actually to me that there, there are some programs there that need to be, need to be developed and fostered and so on. But we don't have a proper analysis of it yet, so it, it's on its way.
Good items, yes, Mike.
It's a small question, but what are the criteria for a healthy chapter? Can you name five, three?
Yeah, so, so there's, the, the criteria are in the engagement letters and there's a standard engagement letter. And it has to do with, for instance, you know, whether they've had elections, whether the, whether the functioning is proper. Like for instance, are they, are they having regular meetings? Do they have a proper election system for this or is it, you know, the same people over and over again? There's a question about a sort of baseline membership, how many people are, are signed up and so on, whether there are activities. So one of the critical things is, you're not really a chapter if you just have like a list that nobody ever posts to and, and so on. There, there needs to be some evidence that the, that the chapter is working. One thing that is, is still a little bit of a challenge about our activities around this and I, I concede this without being too pleased about it, is, is that we still focus a lot of our energy on chapters that, that need to be moved from, you know, kind of working to like really working. And that, there's been a lot of effort around that area and I would like us to spend more attention on some of the chapters that are really active and really doing things. On the other hand, the chapters who are really active and really doing things don't really need our help and they kind of don't want it. And so, you know, that, that's an area where I think you will see over the next year, we will try to focus a little bit of how can we improve those relationships because I think they would be valuable. But I will say that, you know, for instance, one of the, one of the most active chapters that we had was very like low attention from the point of view of the staff. You know, when they wanted us to respond and they wanted us to respond together with them, they, they were not hesitant to ask us and to make sure that, you know, that we would, we would respond to them. They had a technical worry in Hong Kong and they came to us and they asked us to talk to, talk to them about it and we did. And, and I was very pleased to be able to say, this is exactly the kind of relationship that we can have. Here's a very successful chapter, it delivers a lot of value locally. And when it needs us, it, it's, it's sure that we're going to respond and it, and you know, we give them the kind of support that they want. Rather than some of the situations that are somewhat similar, people have felt a little bit like maybe we were overbearing on them. This was a case where they could pull on us and we would deliver and I feel good about that.
Anything else? Yeah, Olga.
Thank you for the report and congratulations. One comment about activities for the chapters, what I can see from our chapter in Argentina, is that there, and I'll tell you a comment about those chapters that are more consolidated. We, we had our 20th anniversary this year. It's, there are a lot of like training somehow activities and it's becoming exhausting for some members because they have to, they have to attend them because they get some points or whatever. And honestly, there are people that have work and it's volunteer work and it has, it is becoming, I mean, I, I promoted many people to get involved into the, into the board. And sometimes they, they comment, say, my God, this is really very, very intense. I don't have that much time for this. And it's people that don't need that. I mean, they are professionals, engineers, lawyers. So that, I think it's okay for some chapters, but some others are, they have to attend because they need to have these points because they thought, if not, they don't get this money to pay the lawyers and all that. Argentina chapter is a registered chapter under the national law. That's extremely expensive now in, in Argentina, but that's okay. We were from the beginning like that. So that, that is a comment, it's not, it's, I don't know how to solve that for the moment, but have that in mind, maybe make it more flexible. Because then people will go away and that's bad.
Yes, for sure. So that's good feedback. Thank you.
Thank you, Olga. Anything else? Anyone else? Okay, good. So you indeed used more than 60 minutes. Thank you. But, you know, I mean, this shows the interest and the good progress we have made. So I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing the, the plan for 2020 tomorrow. Well, to see the presentation, the plan, we have already seen it. But anyway, thanks a lot. Okay, so moving to the, to the next point, which is point number 12 on the agenda. And this relates to the, to the sale of PIR. So as you know, we announced it, you know, no, you don't have to, I mean, this is a public session. Yeah, no, Glenn was pointing if he needs to leave or not because he recuses himself from, from PIR related discussions. But no, this is the open session and the Q and A. So yes, you, you should absolutely stay. So, so as I said, we, we had a press release and to the community. And then we, we have been getting, you know, questions on different main lists, different venues. While we were here in the ITF, when, you know, some trustees were in ICANN. I'm sure that you will get some questions next week in, in the IGF. So, so we decided to basically put together a Q and A. So we went out, especially to the chapter community because they had a lot of questions. And we decided basically to ask openly like, hey, guys, send us a list of questions and we will address them here during the, the board meeting. So Andrew has done, you know, I think a really good job actually being very responsive, answering tons of email. And so, you know, many of the questions that basically, you know, were asked, they have been already answered on the list. But we thought that it was good actually basically to restate the answer so that everybody's on the same page and everybody understands basically, you know, what's going on and we clear some doubts. Having said that, before I give the floor to Andrew, there's been a few questions that they were not really for ISOC to answer, right? I mean, some of them, they were about ICANN policies, specifically about, you know, price caps, which, you know, we didn't have anything to do with that. Others, they were actually for ISOC to answer, but not related to the PIR deal. Specifically, the governance, governance model, for example, we were discussing with Eduardo briefly today. So which, you know, as you know, I mean, like this, you know, for, for trustees that they are elected by, by chapters, for example, that was one of the questions and that doesn't change or is not influencing in any way. So, so in that sense, those questions, well, I mean, we can clarify them a bit. They are not directly related to, to the PIR deal. So, so sometimes it gets kind of everything in the same email, but so it's, it's, I think it's useful to, to think of a taxonomy when, you know, when things are different and they can be addressed in different ways. We don't mix them up because then everything gets confused. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna give the floor to Andrew so that he addresses the questions that we had. And then, you know, after that, maybe we can, we can expand on anything that any of us thinks is unclear. Yes, Mike.
Briefly, are we recording this, this part of the?
Yeah, yeah, of course.
All right.
I mean, everything, all the meetings, the board meetings, the, the public, the, the open to observer sessions, they are in YouTube later. So people can go there and watch it there.
I just wanted to confirm that, thank you.
Yeah, no, because we, I mean, that's a very good point because we acknowledge that with the time difference, it was very difficult for people to join. That was the reason why instead of an open forum where we could get, you know, questions directly, we thought it was better to answer asynchronously so that people can post their, their questions and they don't have to be up until four o'clock in the morning just to, to see this. So without further delay, Andrew, please, could you please?
Sure. So the first pair of questions came from Dave Burstein. And the, the first question, so this is assuming that there is a corpus of money that comes in, which we're calling the endowment, just so that Sandy doesn't, you know, slap my hands again. Strictly speaking, this is not an endowment because it's the proceeds of a sale and so it's not encumbered the way an endowment normally is. I am not a tax lawyer or an accountant and I cannot play one on TV. But we've been calling it an endowment and, and I believe that the board has been treating it as though it were encumbered in that way. That has been the conceptual model that people have been working at with. So the question then is, what will be the rules of the endowment? In particular, will it generally disperse endowment income more or less? I believe that the policy of this board is that this is going to specify a, a drawdown over a five-year rolling average or maybe some other number of years rolling average. And, and that drawdown would in theory be below the return that we would like the endowment to, to return. The idea being here, of course, that the endowment can grow over time and that would cover the risks of inflation and so on. So that is the sort of standard and advice that one gets for operating endowments. And I believe that this board is intending to pursue that policy. That is certainly what I have been telling people.
And just to confirm that, so we haven't passed any resolutions regarding that, but that's exactly the plan we have been discussing. And the idea basically is that we will probably not have some of these rules in the bylaws because this is not something that, you know, it needs to be changed. So the idea is basically to protect this corpus of money as if it was an endowment. And, and you know, the actual rules, whether if it's, if it's, you know, moving average of 10 years, five years, 5%, 7%, those are details that we are obviously working with professional advisors. So, so we, you know, we are not working, I mean, playing, you know, amateur lawyers or, or investment professionals or anything like that. So in that sense, you know, we are getting professional advice and, and we will basically do something that makes sense to protect that and to make sure that we can, you know, continue the operations and everything. So that's indeed the plan.
The nice thing about that is that you've just answered the second question. Who will be, who will manage the finances of the foundation? So the, the fundamental plan here, as I understand it, is that there is a supporting organization. That's where the money lives and there are professional money managers probably hired on contract. We currently deal with Goldman Sachs. They have been our, our, our investment advisors on the reserves and so on of, of the internet society. And also we're our advisors on, on the structure of this transaction. And, you know, we've been happy with them, but whether they're, whether that will just continue or whether we would go and put out an RFP for the whole thing or something like that, I think has been undecided so far. And that's one of the things that the board needs to tackle urgently in the next quarter.
Exactly. Yeah, I mean, and when you said foundation is, is the new, the new entity. So just to make it clear, because we have been creating actually supporting organizations lately. As I said this morning, we created the ITF LLC, we created the foundation and we have been having PIR so far. So the idea would have, would be to have yet another organization that they will basically not take care of that. And, and also I saw some basically questions that maybe it's good to clarify that this is not completely new for us. So as you know, I mean, we have reserves and we have actually professional people managing their reserves. So it's not like now we are just making random decisions that we get into the board and decide where to invest. We have professional advisors and it has always been like that. So in that sense, this is not completely a running code that we have to run. Of course, the, the, you know, magnitude is different, but basically is similar to that.
The next questions came from Richard Hill. The first question from him is, why did the board agree to a non-disclosure agreement with Ethos Capital that prevented ISOC from, one, consulting its constituencies, including the chapters, regarding the principle of selling PIR to a for-profit entity? And, two, consulting its constituencies after the deal was negotiated in private, but before it was closed? I believe the answers to this are things that I have already said, which amount to that the, the internet society is not governed as a member organization under the meaning of that in, in US law. That is, you don't consult with people. It's a, essentially it's a representative body and we have people who are appointed, who are appointed to the board by different constituencies, but the, but then they come here with that sort of picture of the world, but they come as, as a, as a board. They're not here as, you know, sort of elected representatives of constituency. The, the effect of that is that we were operating in, under sort of standard commercial rules because when you negotiate with people over large dollar transactions, generally speaking, people are only willing to do that with you if you're willing to do it in secret. And so we proceeded that in that way. And that extends to the, the, you know, continuing period before this deal closes that we are bound by the terms of the non-disclosure agreement. Because that's what the, that, that's what the buyer was willing to do. My understanding, and I would appreciate to have it confirmed, is that everybody agreed that this was in fact advantageous to the internet society, that it was better this way than to try to run it as a public auction. Because if you tried to run it as a public auction, it would be highly disruptive to, to the business of PIR and potentially fatally disruptive to staff morale there. And it was by no means obvious at the beginning of this, of this effort, that the transaction would go ahead at all because it was possible that the, the number was just never going to happen. So that, that was my understanding of the situation.
Yeah, exactly. And, and as we said several times, I mean, we have been trying to disclose as much as possible. So to answer the question, yes, I mean, we were basically discussing that we wanted to keep the community as informed as possible. But we have the duty of loyalty towards ISOC, so we had to make sure exactly that ongoing operations were, were ongoing, that, you know, employee morale didn't fall. And, and basically, I mean, there's certain laws that we cannot break. So, you know, we were bound to them. So, yeah, I, we weren't intending to, to open the floor, so just to, to keep things a bit more manageable. And is that okay? I, yeah, I was gonna talk about that. So yeah, regarding the, the, what Andrew was saying about the, the different, you know, trustees and the governors. Exactly, I mean, we have, you know, basically trustees coming from the three different communities and we were discussing here. All of us, you know, come with different backgrounds and everybody was basically in the loop except Glenn, that he's recused from PIR discussions, but everyone else basically was familiar with this. We were discussing and in this case, actually, we were making all decisions unanimously. So in that sense, you know, we, we were quite confident that we were doing the right thing. To close the loop on the last point regarding governance, this was what I was referring to at the beginning, that we got some questions about, like people thinking that it's unclear whether we are a member-based organization or cost-driven. I mean, it's, it's very clear that we are a cost-driven organization. This was discussed actually before my time in the board. And, but actually it was explicitly discussed. And when we changed the governance, indeed, as I said this morning, actually the chapters, they got more weight in the governance of ISO. So as you may remember before, there were six members, you know, chosen by the organizations. And, and basically then it was moved to four, 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 which is now the, the current way. So in that sense, it's not that we have never discussed this. I mean, people are feel, feel to disagree or agree with the current structure and we could, you know, decide at some point to change it. But the current structure is quite clear. I mean, we have this type of governance and we have, you know, chapter people here, people selected by the ITF and people elected by organizations as well. So that hasn't changed in the last few years and it's not changing because of this deal at all. And as I said, I'm very happy to have this discussion separately, the governance, but it's, it's not in any way basically tied to this deal, just to make it very clear.
So I think that that answers the next question that Richard had, which was, what measures with, will the board put into place to ensure that all important decisions are presented to the ISOC constituencies, including the chapters, for comment before they are taken? And I think what you have just said is, that is neither a requirement nor in fact desirable because of the governance structure that the organization has.
Right. And, and as everybody knows, I mean, we, we have been actually trying to, to improve our transparency over the last, you know, five years. And, and I saw some comments on the list regarding, you know, board meetings and everything. So as you know, I mean, this and any other board meeting is actually in YouTube. So everything, you know, all the open to observer sessions, they are not only broadcast in real time, but they are also stored and available in YouTube. So people can go there, watch them. The minutes are of course, you know, public and, and, you know, we are trying to be as transparent as possible. So in that sense, yeah, I mean, those are the rules that we have. And as I said, I mean, we are open to discussing, you know, them at any point if we can improve in, you know, on any front. But again, they are not directly related to, to this deal in particular. They are just generic governance question.
Thank you. The next question came from Christian, but I don't know what last name and it was hidden because of course this is on the mailing list. So it's just Christian via chapter delegates. It, it asks, is the action plan available in draft form? Or is the intention to draw up draft plans at the board meeting and put it out for, to consultation to chapters and others to provide structured feedback following organizing local, local comments? I believe the answer to this is that it has never been done that way, but instead, normally the action plan is presented to the board as an annual plan that you approve as part of the budget process. This year, however, we did, in fact, develop this, the action plan, in consultation with the community. That is the feedback that I have provided to this individual already, because I thought it was a staff question, but I wanted to make sure that you were in agreement.
Yeah, absolutely. And as I said, I mean, we've been always working on transparency and in terms of community engagement. And this was one of basically the guidelines that we gave Andrew when he joined, that we wanted more a global engagement from our community when we developed the action plan. And I think this year is a great example of seeing how, you know, we have been reaching out to the different communities, asking for topics, asking for feedback. So in that sense, I think it's clearly done in a way that by the time, you know, the action plan is presented to the board today, I mean, all the community have seen it, they have provided feedback. So in that sense, I think this is basically, I mean, we are taking many steps in the direction that was suggested by the people on the mailing list.
The next question came from Andrea Ramoli Garcia, and it asked, "Does the Internet Society propose any strategy, especially to educate users about monetizing their data?" I don't currently have, we do not currently have a specific strategy around that for next year in the staff plans.
Is this related to this particular transaction?
It is not. It's just one of the questions that I got.
Okay, I see. Well, you just answered, we haven't talked about this, so I'm not gonna provide a random answer that I just come up with. We will discuss it at some point. So thanks for the feedback, and let's focus on answering the questions on topic.
The next question, which I just got, is from Alexandra Bohm, who says, claims to be writing on behalf of the Netherlands ISOC chapter. I don't know whether that means this is somebody who is writing on behalf of, like, there was a vote or not. But I just wanted to disclose that. So the question is, "Does the board acknowledge that the PIR sale is causing substantial harm to the reputation of the Internet Society as the blowback RE, the PIR sale from the community, surprised the board?" And there are some URLs that are quoted. "And does this cause them to reconsider their position?" I think it would be inappropriate for me to comment on that.
Exactly. So just to, I mean, reiterate that, I mean, we were discussing all the potential implications of this sale, and we thought about, you know, basically, all the questions that we have seen on the list. So just, you know, the community can rest assured that we analyzed this thoroughly. And all the points that they have been brought up, we were basically discussing them. We basically took a lot from different perspectives. And we decided that, you know, all in all, again, we have a duty of loyalty to the organization. This was the best move. We all would like to take decisions that they are all maximizing or minimizing something. Those are easy, right? So the more of something or the less of something is better. They are trade-offs, and we are aware that, you know, any decision that, like this one, they have trade-offs. But all in all, we decided that this was actually quite positive for the Internet Society. We are basically meeting goals in terms of revenue diversification that we have been working on them since many, many years. And we think that, you know, the deal was positive. We thought about those things. And, you know, I haven't seen basically arguments on the list in the last few days that I would have said we didn't consider. So I didn't see any big surprises. So, which is good, because, you know, I think, as I said, we did a thorough analysis, but, I mean, you can always miss something. I don't think it's been the case so far. So I guess this answers the question.
And the final question that is here, "When did the board become aware of former ICANN CEO Fadi Shahidi being involved in Ethos Capital? And did this, or would this, have influenced their view on the PIR sale?" Just to be clear, as a point of information, but it's not contained in this question, Fadi Shahidi is not, strictly speaking, involved in Ethos Capital. He has been working for them as an advisor and not actually as one of the principals. But with that said, I don't know whether you want to tackle this question.
Yeah, I mean, like, we got basically, I mean, we talked to several people. And as you have seen, you know, some of the founding fathers of the internet, they were also basically, you know, quoted in our press release, expressing, you know, their support. So in that sense, I think, you know, we consulted with everyone we had to consult. In that sense, I mean, given the legal constraints, as I said before. And again, I mean, based on the, you know, duty of loyalty, I don't think it would be, actually, I mean, sensible for us to censor certain individuals because of, basically, you know, well, any opinion you may have, positive or negative on them, if it is not material to the deal. So in that sense, you know, having Fadi being an advisor, I don't think it's a reason for just, you know, not going ahead with a deal. So in that sense, I think, yeah, that answers the question.
Those are all the questions that I received.
Okay. So basically, as I said, we will continue answering questions. I hope that, you know, the answers were clear, because this type of channel provides a bit more bandwidth than just answering emails. And I was trying to think, I think we capture everything. Eduardo was asking this morning about governance, we dealt with that. Another common theme, as I said also, was the price caps, the removal of the price caps. And again, this was not our decision, this is not anything we asked for. And as far as I can tell, it's kind of widely applicable to anyone. So in that sense, you know, that's, again, not directly related to this deal, and we cannot comment on that either. So I think with that, again, we will continue receiving comments, discussing on the list, and, you know, you know how to reach us. We have been trying to have, you know, Andrew basically be the focal point of this, so that there's no confusion. But, you know, of course, just to clarify, in case it wasn't clear, Andrew has our full support from the board. And the board is obviously, you know, involved in these decisions. And, you know, as I said, so far, we have been making all decisions regarding to this deal unanimously, which, you know, shows actually that we are on the same page. At least the trustees. Perfect. Okay, good. So that basically concludes this point. And just to reiterate, you know, if you have further questions, don't hesitate to reach out to us on Ask on the List, and we will, you know, be basically there, responsive for you. Thank you. So now, moving ahead to number 13 on the agenda, point 13. Kevin, do we have?
Gunilla.
Yes. Okay, perfect. So just to give you a bit of background on this presentation. So as you know, we always invite, you know, the local chapter or the regional bureau or someone that, you know, can basically come and talk to us. But as you know, I mean, we came here not long ago, I think, two years ago, two years ago, yeah. And so we already talked, actually, to the Singapore chapter, and that was a very interesting presentation. As you know, we just finished the round of talking to all our regional bureaus. So we didn't want to start another round if we could have something new to be presented. And something I was discussing with the board was that, you know, the SIG, the Special Interest Group, you know, we had a presentation in the last board meeting, and we thought that it would be actually nice to see another presentation to understand, you know, what we are doing with that. Because we usually talk a lot about chapters and organizations and everything in the board meetings, but something that we also have are the SIG, and I think is kind of interesting to understand what they do. So Gunilla is joining us to talk about the SIG. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, we can hear you as well. So please go ahead, and thanks for joining.
And thank you very much for the invitation. I'm delighted to be able to speak to you and Andrew and the board today, early in Berlin. And so thank you very much for this time slot. It was a lot better than the previous one. And I must send apologies from President Mohammed Shabir Awan and our Secretary Judith Hallestein, who would have liked to have participated in this call, but actually in the air at the moment. So I'm speaking on behalf of the Executive Committee. Next slide, please. And the vision for the Accessibility Special Interest Group is equal access to the internet and its features regardless of disability. And this very closely relates to the Internet Society's statement that the internet is for everyone. And we know that there are well over 1 billion people globally with a disability. So we want to make sure that people with disability, just like everyone else, has equal access to the internet. So our mission is to support activities, to improve accessibility to the internet for people with disability. And we do that in a number of different ways. Next slide, please. First of all, some facts and figures about us. We're a very young special interest group. We were founded in 2019. And this came about from the foundation of the chapter on special needs and disability that had been going for quite a while. But it makes a lot of sense to have a special interest group on accessibility, because it is global, and we work across all regions. In fact, our membership is growing strongly. And these figures are actually from the Internet Society's membership data, which states 57 members and over 310 members. Now, that sounds like a large number, but it's a bit of a process involved, which is might, we might need a bit of fine tuning, and we're currently working with staff about that. We have our own membership registration form to learn a little bit more about the people who wish to join us in regards to disability, their experience in accessibility and so forth. So we're working through those issues. We're pleased to be what we believe is the first for a SIG, a special interest group, to have a fiscal sponsorship arrangement. And this is with a New York chapter. And it means that we have a detailed agreement with Roson Responsibility of the New York chapter and the SIG. And this means that we can set up a bank account, that is a sub-account of the New York chapter. And hopefully, our admin funding will be available through that arrangement. Our Executive Committee, I've mentioned Mohammed Shabir Awan as president, I'm the vice president. Judith Hallestein is secretary, Greg Shatton is treasurer, and Jolie McPhee is AMS admin, but a lot more than that. Some of us have lived experience of disability. We share legal, technical policy and advocacy expertise. Next slide, please. So our activities in 2019, bearing in mind that we've just operated over six months, include webinars, blogs and speakers at various meetings and webcasting. Next slide, please. So this is quite a long list for just over six months. I won't go through them all in detail, but I will highlight some, including the webinar, which we held on the 16th of May. It's Global Accessibility Awareness Day. This was organized by the SIG, and a special speaker was Dan York from the Internet Society. And we also were involved with the M. Enabling Summit, which is a global summit organized by G3 ICT in Washington DC each year, and attended by Greg Shatton, who spoke about a number of legal matters in regard to accessibility and discrimination. We know that there are a number of countries internationally who include online accessibility as part of the discrimination legislation. Also, we had a number of blogs that are on the Internet Society website that you can find there. And also wanted to mention, we are linking in with a number of key meetings and organizations like the Asia-Pacific Regional IGF, and of course, the Global IGF being held in Berlin or about to start. And in regard to the Asia-Pacific Regional IGF, the one held in Bloody Rosstock, we were pleased to have an accessibility plenary session at that. And I organized that session, and together with Mohammed Shabir Awan, spoke both remotely at that. We were pleased to have three of our Executive Committee at the ICANN 66 meeting in Montreal. Greg, Judith and myself. We had an opportunity to meet face-to-face and also meet with Joyce Donia, and had other meetings with ICANN. Sorry, please bear with me, because I haven't slept very much in the last 24 hours after a long flight from Australia. So we had meetings with ISOC staff, Dan York and Joyce Donia, and were pleased to participate in the Internet Society functions during that meeting. And the rest of the activities, in the interest of time, are there for you to read. Next slide, please. And the Accessibility SIG, and why it says A11Y SIG, some of you may not be aware, is the accessibility technical community uses what's called a numerum to designate the word accessibility. So you have 11 letters between the A and the Y, just for your interest. So the Accessibility SIG has partnered with the Accessibility New York chapter to webcast a number of events about accessibility. And it's clear here that accessibility isn't only about web accessibility. While that's a vital part, there are many, many other aspects. And for example, on August 6, 2019, there was an interactive 3D printed models for students with visual impairments. 3D is an interesting technology being used now to print business cards with braille on them, braille on both sides of a card. This is the first time that's been possible. And we in the Accessibility SIG have had business cards printed that way. And so that's been a very, very interesting process. And as you can see on the slide, normally, I would read through them. But again, I just wanted to indicate the number of different activities in the accessibility and the technical accessibility space. Next slide, please. And just to add there, some other webcasts, the Partnership for Progress on the Digital Divide Conference in May. The Accessibility SIG was discussed there at some length. And coming up on the 2nd of December, if anyone is interested, is the Tactile Design for Accessibility, and that's an interactive workshop. And I encourage anyone who would like to delve more into accessibility to participate in that workshop. Next slide, please. Now, the internet is for everyone. And that, again, is the Internet Society's statement. So we have a number of plans for the coming year or two from the Accessibility SIG, and we have a number of suggestions for the Internet Society. Next slide, please. So there's quite a few here. And I'll start with a practical one, which is to resolve account-related challenges and streamlined funding issues. And we would share this with a number of SIG in regard to the non-geographic nature of our organizations. And we look forward to working with our ISOC staff to do that. And we're participating in the...
Before we move on, because we discussed this this morning, actually, during the previous...
during the previous session. So, I mean, is the challenge that you don't have an account? Or what is the challenge in particular?
Okay, from our point of view, and not knowing the discussion you had this morning, but we hope to have all of this sorted very soon with setting up a bank account through that fiscal sponsorship we have with the New York chapter. And it's a subaccount of the New York chapter. So we need to smooth all that out. And what we want to ensure is that we have then an easy flow from the admin fund. And we talked to Joyce about that, so I'm presuming that that will happen. It's, that's basically it. And also, to be clear on the, I think the rebadged small grants funding initiative through, just to make sure that that's clear, how we can work with that as a non-geographic chapter or SIG.
Thank you.
Okay. But I suppose in regard to other SIGs, they may not have progressed with this. So we hope that that will, our arrangement might serve as a model for other SIGs in future. Okay, so just, just coming back to the IGF in Berlin, Judith Halistain, myself and Mohammed Shabir Awan will be here. We're fortunate to have some unrelated, well, some external funding of various sources to be here. And one of the activities is liaising with other related organizations. And that includes the IGF's Dynamic Coalition on Accessibility and Disability. And so through that, I've been organizing a workshop and will be co-moderating that, also facilitating a session on behalf of the Dynamic Coalition on Accessibility and Disability, speaking at the main session about dynamic coalitions. And speaking on a panel for another workshop, as is Mohammed Shabir Awan. So you can see that we're going to be very busy here at IGF and looking forward to catching up with Internet Society representatives as well. We are looking at also having a workshop proposals for the Asia-Pacific Regional IGF, which will be held in Nepal. This is going to be the first time in a regional IGF there will be sign language interpretation. So there will be quite, quite useful accessibility built into the APR IGF. And so we're looking forward to seeing that and working with people with disability and disability representatives in the region. We continue doing outreach in a number of various venues, organizations, and certainly in major disability organizations like the World Blind Union to make people aware of the work being done through our SIG and in the internet community and to link people up as best as we can. We also are encouraging CCTLDs and GTLDs to raise awareness on web accessibility through the DNS community. This is an excellent way to share information about web accessibility. So when new websites are being set up or there are revisions to websites and apps using particular domain names, then people can create more accessibility. And we are encouraged to say that the New Zealand Domain Name Commission will have a publicity campaign next year. The .US domain name registry will be blogging and doing some other awareness raising next year. So we look forward to further work in this area. And then we're talking about a number of webinars on digital accessibility challenges. And just to be clear, for some of you who may not be aware of some accessibility challenges on a website, for example, if a blind person using screen reading software and speech output, and they want to scan the important parts of a web site and not able to do so, that might be because the website has links on it saying, "See more, read more", and there's no context. So it's a matter of where you put those links. It could be on the title of a news item, for example, or it needs to be connected with a context. And for people who are deaf or significantly hearing impaired, having captions on videos is vital. There are just two items that are challenges. So organizing a webinar, best practice accessibility guidelines. And here, linking in with W3C's Web Accessibility Initiative is vital. As many of you would know, W3C have developed the Web Content Accessibility Guidelines, which are used by governments across the world, and also user agent guidelines for accessibility, et cetera. So making use of a wide variety of resources from W3C will help us to organize a webinar and also to support ISOC staff and chapters in the use of best practice accessibility guidelines. I've had some good discussions with Dan York and look forward to further discussions with him to collaborate on how we can best move forwards. And we look forward to doing more maybe with IGF 2020. So there's a number of activities. Next slide, please. And to finish off with suggestions for the Internet Society. Some of us may have talked to some of you about this in the past. One of them is to develop and conduct a survey of current accessibility awareness across key areas of ISOC staff. This means that, for example, with hiring people to be as inclusive as possible when it comes to the experience and expertise of possibly people with disability who may wish to join the Internet Society. And also about how to incorporate accessibility in policy programs and communications, so that it's not an afterthought. It's something that is built into the DNA of the Internet Society. So it's really about ISOC walking the talk on accessibility for people with disability, which means accessible websites, accessible online courses, incorporate accessibility in policy programs and communications, as I mentioned, and to designate and define a senior level accessibility champion for persons with disability, so that it's not, it's not an afterthought. It's something that's there. So it could be a new program being developed or revised. Are there any impacts on people with disability and accessibility? If not, fine. If there is, well, let's have someone within the organization between staff and, say, the Accessibility SIG, who can then work forwards on how to ensure that inclusiveness is there. So that's some suggestions based on, from the Accessibility SIG on accessibility. But looking at SIGs generally, we had a talk with Joyce Donia in Montreal about SIG sharing ideas and ideas and suggestions with each other. So setting up a SIG list would be a great way to do that. And we believe that that may be happening. And also to provide further support for SIGs to enable that enhanced liaison. A possible SIG leadership meeting would be really beneficial for us going forward. And I touched on it before, it's some of the funding issues, maybe not so much for the Accessibility SIG, but for some of the other SIGs. And the status of SIGs as against chapters, there are some differences. And we look forward to working with Internet Society to stay where we can improve that. And we look forward to continuing with the Accessibility SIG to continue to improve accessibility across the internet community. So next slide to say thank you very much.
Oh, excellent. Thank you very much. It's, yeah, thanks for the presentation. Very interesting. Thanks also for having some practical advice at the end, because it's usually good to basically, you know, let's say, you know, move from well intentions to things that they could be basically changed in practice. So I appreciated that. And it's good to see, I mean, you guys like six months down the road, because you are a very new SIG, basically. So where you are and how, you know, you are ramping up, attracting members and everything. So that was very exciting, actually. Do we have any questions, Mike?
Just very briefly, I have to ask, what was the cost of the 3D printed braille on both sides, business cards? I mean, does it scale? Was it, how feasible was it? Or was it just proof of concept? Or tell me a little more about that. I have a lot of people in the differently abled community who'd like to know the answer to that question.
Okay, I'll be happy to answer that. Thank you. These were actually done in Australia. And it seems that Australia might be the first in doing this 3D printing for braille business cards. For 1,000 cards, that was for three members of our executive committee. It cost Australian $800, which I think in US dollars is about just around 500 US. So if you wanted to have the more traditional braille embossed cards, certainly it's a very competitive price. And certainly, if you're ordering from Australia to the US or other countries, I think it would be quite competitive.
Thank you. Thanks. Interesting. Glenn, please.
Great. Thanks for the presentation. Two questions. Remember, there used to be an ISOC Special Needs Chapter, right? That went into, became defunct. Did any of those chaps who were involved with that God provide any sort of assistance to you at all? I don't see them, they might be members, but they're not on your list of officers. And the second thing, I recall you did a very extensive culture of accessibility for ICANN a few years ago. Is that similar type of model that you're looking at for us?
Okay, thanks Glenn for your questions. Certainly, the old Special Needs and Disability Chapter that retired, it, we didn't necessarily have any transference there. I had been a member of that chapter probably from its inception. And there was one particular very active senior person in that chapter called Cynthia Woodell. She was really the guiding light for the chapter. Unfortunately, she died. So the chapter continued on, but the two key people in it really had very limited time based on their other commitments to continue on the chapter. So it made sense then to move on to the Accessibility SIG. So I hope that answers your question, Glenn. In regard to the second question, yes, I was involved with an ICANN Accessibility Task Force through AtLARGE. And Glenn, you were involved a lot as well. In regard to, one particular task was to develop a survey for staff and administer that. And the questions covered a wide variety of questions. It had to do with HR, it had to do with legal, it had to do with programs, the website and so forth. And the results of the survey, this was probably about three years ago, maybe four, was that, there was quite a way to go. If, and Glenn may not be, use the same words as me, but we felt there was still a lot of learning to be done by our ICANN staff. And there still is a long way to go. So it really is a matter of how we move forwards on this. And I would really welcome the opportunity for this type of activity to be done with the Internet Society, because it's a starting point. It's a basis to then say, oh, okay, these are gaps in knowledge about accessibility within certain key areas of the Internet Society. Then how can we move forwards to make that change for inclusion?
Okay, yeah, that, I think, Glenn, I think it does. Glenn?
You mentioned I would use different words, like what kind of words would I use?
You would be less diplomatic than me.
Thank you.
Okay, on that note, thanks a lot. Thanks a lot for joining. Seriously though, as I said, I liked especially the concrete advice and everything. So I'm sure that if you are in touch already with Dan and Joyce and all the team, they will basically, you know, take care of that. And, but, you know, mostly from the board, I mean, facts, so that we understand, you know, what's going on. And we don't have to be involved in the details, but at least, you know, it's good to see something like this happening. So thanks. And again, thanks for joining. I mean, we know that, you know, you guys are traveling a lot. This is like a big effort with the time difference, but we greatly appreciate it.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Have a good day. Bye bye. Okay, good. So for, I mean, moving on, now we're gonna have a break and then a closed executive session. And basically today, we will only open the session again to approve the PIR budget. So as usual, the discussion will happen in the executive session. So for observers and remote observers, I mean, you know, if you are interested in seeing how we pass a resolution, then, I mean, by all means, join again. Otherwise, you are off the hook. Tomorrow, we will be starting at nine o'clock in the morning. And as I said before, tomorrow is a very interesting day, because, you know, Andrew will be basically presenting the action plan for 2020. We will be talking about budgets and everything. And then we will also have the foundation meeting. So that's also interesting. So that will happen tomorrow. So thanks a lot. Thank you. We were in the executive session, we discussed the PIR budget as usual. And then, you know, we come back online in the open to basically approve. And then, you know, we come back online in the open to basically approve the budget proposal. So, we are on, I mean, point number 17 on the agenda. And I would like to open the mic to anyone who has comments before we go into approving the resolution.
Looks fine, I think we should vote.
Okay, perfect. So, I need someone to move. So, Mike moves, Olga seconds. And as any, I mean, our tradition is like any decision that has financial implications, we do it by roll call. So, I will be calling everyone. Well, no, as a matter of fact, we're gonna start with Mike going in this direction. So, you have to say your name and your vote. And the vote can be yes, no, or abstain. So, we will start with Mike and go this direction. So, Mike, please start. The mic, Mike, use the mic.
I'm Mike, I vote yes.
I'm Glenn, and I abstain.
Pepper votes yes.
Oliver votes yes.
Sean votes yes.
Richard votes yes.
Gonzalo, yes.
John, yes.
Hans-Peter, yes.
Yoroshu, yes.
Walid, yes.
Mika, yes.
Okay, so, the resolution passes with 11 votes for and one abstention. And, yeah, Glenn was abstaining. Okay, thank you. So, that concludes our agenda for today. Do we have any other business before we recess? Okay, good. So, tomorrow, we will be starting at 9 o'clock local time. We are in Singapore, so if we have any remote attendees, please join then. Otherwise, you can watch this afterwards. We will upload it to YouTube as usual. So, I move to recess. See you tomorrow.